Anna Smith.
Here.
Shade Fashakun.
Here.
Nikosi Nelson.
Here.
Trish Bodie. Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia.
Here.
Paul Gautier. Francesco Romans. It is 6:17 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. It is my pleasure to welcome Sebastian Holt and Elena Aguilar from Vista Ridge High School to lead us in the pledge tonight. Y'all can come up and lead us in the pledge. Alright, thank you. Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Up next, we are excited to shine our spotlight on learning with the Vista Range, Vista Ridge, oh my goodness, y'all. Vista Ridge High School. Go Rangers. Y'all come up. Whenever y'all are ready, take it away Rangers.
Good evening, Madam President, School Board, Dr. Gearing. I'm Keith Morgan, the proud principal of Vista Ridge High School. And tonight, I brought some staff and students to talk about our AVID program. AVID stands for Advancement via Individual Determination. A college readiness system that equips students with the skills, habits, and confidence to succeed in college careers and life. Our AVID journey at Vista Ridge began in 2007 with just two elective sections and has grown to 14 sections, serving more than 300 students each year. In 2013, Vista Ridge became an AVID national demonstration school, recognizing our commitment to using AVID strategies schoolwide to strengthen instruction and student engagement. AVID is part of our school culture and focuses on WICER, writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. Helping students take ownership of their learning, think critically, and support one another in solving complex problems. Beyond the classroom, AVID guides students through college and career exploration, preparing them to lead and succeed beyond graduation. Going to introduce Dr. Stacy Steele, our Dean of Instruction.
Thank you so much. In 2023, we were honored to welcome the AVID National Board and AVID founder Netmarie Catherine Swanson to Vista Ridge High School for the first ever national board visit to a campus. This visit was especially meaningful and it was because we were selected as a model campus to showcase how we integrate AVID's instructional practices into both our professional learning and teacher's lesson design. And across our classrooms, our teachers intentionally, they planned with WICER in mind in showcasing strategies again in that writing, reading, inquiry, collaboration, and organization to engage students in deeper learning. By embedding these elements into daily instruction, our teachers create classrooms of this intentional planning that is reflected not only in classroom engagement, but also in our student achievement data, demonstrating the power of AVID practices across our campus. At Vista Ridge High School, we built a strong culture of high expectations where students are encouraged to challenge themselves through rigorous coursework. And our students consistently rise to this challenge. For example, last year, over 1,300 students took more than 3,300 AP exams. Most AP courses are taken during 10th through 12th grade. Most, after students have completed the foundational prerequisites. While students are not required to take AP exams, we strongly encourage participation as a way to demonstrate mastery and earn potential college credit. What's especially exciting is the success of our AVID students. Our AVID elective students not only enrolled in AP courses at higher rates than our non-AVID peers, but they are also passing their exams at the same rate. This data shows that AVID truly equips students with the confidence, skills, knowledge, and perseverance to take challenging courses and succeed on high stakes exams. In short, our AVID students are not just college ready, they're beyond college ready. Now, we would like to share what this looks like through the voices of our community. You'll hear from a few of our current AVID students, an AVID graduate, and a parent who has several children participating and who have participated in our AVID program as they share their personal experiences. Our first AVID student is junior, Mr. Sebastian Holt.
Good evening. My name is Sebastian Holt and I'm a junior here at Vista Ridge. And this is my third year in AVID. I began my high school journey in 2023 and I have to admit, it was far from ideal. Personal struggles left me feeling alone in what felt like a black hole with no way out. The first few weeks were a blur of isolation and I didn't know how to ask for help. Then AVID entered my life and forced me to change my trajectory, pushed me out of my comfort zone and into situations I would never have chosen for myself. I was challenged to speak to classmates I'd never spoken to before and to work in groups with people from different backgrounds. In those moments, I was forced to face myself in the mirror and make a difficult change. It wasn't an easy or quick process and I stumbled many times. But with each challenge, I gained a little more courage and learned that growth often happens when we are pushed beyond what is comfortable. Over the past two years, going on three, I've used the skills I learned in AVID to build a better version of myself. The confidence I gained from public speaking has extended far beyond the classroom, helping me succeed in other extracurriculars such as a pediatric cancer awareness group I'm involved in, which focuses on meeting with LISD boards and LISD schools on running spirit weeks or gold up games for the sports within the school. It creates more awareness and just collects more donations for further research. I've had the privilege and opportunity to speak to the LISD boards and it's taught me a lot. My time management and organization skills that made my daily life more efficient, helping me meet deadlines and plan for my future. Through AVID's focus on inquiry, I gained a deeper understanding of the why behind our actions, providing me with a more mature perspective on life. Thanks to AVID, I've joined new clubs, made new friends, and discovered things about myself I never knew before. It didn't just teach me, it helped heal me. And no other class or club has had that profound an impact on my life. I want to continue to carry out what AVID taught me and share my story. So that if another student is struggling like I was, they may find the support that they need. I want to prove that it's possible to find your way out of the darkness and build a brighter future for yourself. Thanks to the skills and community that AVID provides. Thank you.
Thank you, Sebastian. We now will hear from current student senior, Ms. Eliana Aguilar.
Good evening. My name is Eliana Rose Aguilar and I am so excited to share my AVID story and how it has completely changed my life. I first joined the AVID program in the seventh grade, inspired by my older sister, who had already been a part of it for several years. And watching how AVID helps her prepare for college and build strong academic habits motivated me to join as well. And it's been one of the best decisions I've ever made. While AVID is best known for its focus on college readiness and academic preparation, what makes it truly special is how it weaves WICER or writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading habits into every single assignment. Whether it's completing tutorial request forms, maintaining planners and binders, organizing our backpacks, participating in Socratic seminars, or doing note checks for each subject, every activity builds real life habits that matter. We've also researched colleges and career paths, prepared for the SAT and PSAT, built professional resumes, and even practiced job interviews. The wonderful thing about AVID is that no matter how long you've been in the program, whether it's six years or just one, you leave with the same essential skills and habits that continue to guide you towards success. Throughout my high school journey, I was facing a lot of personal family challenges during one of the most crucial times in my academic career. Staying focused on school at times felt more challenging and I was scared of falling behind. But with the help of my AVID family, they guided me and allowed for me to get back on my feet. I caught up in no time and finished my junior year strong with an unweighted GPA of 3.97. At this time, I'm getting my final college application in and have already been accepted to my safety options with minimum scholarships of $5,000 a year. In my six years of being a part of the AVID program, I've gained incredible skills and I hope to hold on to them for the rest of my life. I will always be grateful for the AVID community, curriculum, and mission. I hope to one day see AVID expand to every school across the United States. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Eliana. We are now going to hear from our AVID alumni, Ms. Kaylee Negret.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kaylee Negret and I'm so happy to be here speaking with you all. I'm a freshman at the University of Texas at Austin, where I'm majoring in biology and a minor in health communications, HUCOM. My first introduction to the AVID program was in sixth grade when the only AVID teacher at Henry Middle School came to encourage students to join the program. She spoke about planners, binders, and preparing for college, but what really stood out to me was her emphasis on community. She emphasized AVID as a class in which students could prepare themselves for higher education and an outlet for students to find friendships with other like-minded students with similar passions. The presentation was enticing to my little 12-year-old Blaine, so I decided to apply. From seventh to eighth grade, I fell in love with the people, my teacher, and the environment AVID created. It was more than a class to me, it felt like a family. However, after my eighth grade year and the onset of COVID-19, I felt disconnected from the program and decided not to continue AVID in high school. Throughout my freshman year, I managed to keep good grades, but something was missing. I didn't have a space where I felt supported, a teacher I could go to for advice, or a group of classmates who knew and supported me. That's when I decided to rejoin AVID my sophomore year. And during my interview, I met Ms. Mondragon, or as I like to call her, Ms. Moni. I told her about the community I'd been missing and she helped me rebuild it. From the moment I came back, I knew I had made the right decision. AVID became my home again. I found classmates I could learn with, laugh with, and lean on. I built strong study habits, learned how to write a resume and handle interviews, and gained valuable tools that helped me inside and outside of the classroom. When it came time for college applications, AVID made all the difference, especially as a first-generation college student. Between Ms. Moni's support, the resources we had, and the structure AVID gave me, I was able to manage everything from SAT prep, college essays, volunteer hours, and applications without feeling overwhelmed. By the end of my junior year, I had nearly everything ready for my applications, which allowed me to start my senior year ahead of schedule and submit everything early. If I hadn't rejoined AVID my sophomore year, I honestly don't think I'd be here today or have the privilege of being a student at the best university in the world. The program gave me confidence, discipline, and the sense of belonging I needed to succeed, both academically and personally. Even now in college, I continue to use what AVID taught me every single day. I still use my planner religiously to stay on top of my deadlines. And while I might not be filling out TIREFs or attending tutorials anymore, I've carried those same collaboration skills that were formed in AVID to the study groups I've started with my peers and some of my hardest classes like general chemistry and intro to biology. I want to close by saying, the AVID is so much more than just a class. It's a support system and a family, helping provide students with the skills, confidence, and the community they need to reach goals they might not have thought were possible. I'm proud to be where I am today and I owe so much of that to AVID, to my AVID teachers, and to the community that believed in me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kaylee. We are now going to watch a short video of a parent who had three kids come through our AVID program. Mr. Charles Milligan.
Hello. My name is Charles Milligan. My wife and I are proud parents of three children. And all three have or is currently attending Vista Ridge. But most importantly, all three are currently going through the AVID program. There's no doubt about it that the AVID program gave our children and is currently giving our child an incredible foundation to go on to higher education. This program helped our children become more accountable in their classes. It gave them the ability to become organized. And most importantly, for those two that are in college now, it gave them skills to take better note-taking that has benefited them now. I highly recommend this class. It gave our children the ability to look into colleges they never thought they would possibly attend. And it gave them resources to look into scholarships. And every bit of money that we can save definitely helps out. We were very fortunate to have the teachers we had in this program. I highly recommend this program.
Alright, so now we're going to hear a little more from our AVID team lead, Ms. Jessica Mondragon.
So as you can see, as you've seen, as you've heard from our students, parents, and our alumni, our AVID students excel inside the classroom. Our AVID students were 10% of the senior class that brought in 18% of scholarship offers. That's over $2 million for the class of 2025. The AVID senior excellence doesn't happen just in senior AVID. We begin with the application process their junior year. In AVID, we help them with their college essays and applications so that they start their senior year prepared and ready to submit their college applications. Some of our seniors even begin their senior year with college acceptances. We provide them with the class time, guidance, all while supporting them with the scholarship application process throughout the year and celebrate each scholarship offer. Our AVID students are outperforming seniors across the nation in academic persistence by over 6%. The support and family culture is what makes AVID not just a program, but a system for success. And at Vista Ridge, this also leads us to...
Sorry. Preparing students to be the best for the world. I was trying to remember exactly what was next. There we go.
And at Vista Ridge, this helps us, preparing students to be the best for the world. Go Rangers.
Thank y'all so much for this presentation. This was very, very insightful. I feel like I learned so much about AVID and I want to come visit and I need my kids to be in AVID, so. But can y'all stay there? We all want to take a picture with y'all. Next is the citizen comments portion of our agenda. Before I invite the first speaker to the microphone, we will watch a short introductory video.
Hello, my name is Alexis Anderson. I'm a junior at Vista Ridge High School. The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here in Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the citizen comment agenda item. This has dedicated time during this meeting to hear from the whole community and the entire LISD family is listening. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you've read the guidelines specified in the Board Operating Procedures, and BED Local. The Board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in board meetings, either by watching them online, or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email or just tell them that you would like to chat later. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus on your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please, conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Speakers one, three, and four, if you don't mind forming a line, so when you're ready to speak, when your number is called. And we will start with speaker number one.
Good evening, Board members and directors. My name is Kevin Wong, a student currently attending of Vandergriff High School. This is a speech I prepared to deliver on June 5th, but due to unforeseen complications, I wasn't able to attend that meeting. I'm grateful for the chance to speak now. Tonight, I'm not here to just talk about IB or book bans, topics I've spoken on before. Tonight is different. I'm here as a former Cypress Cheetah, speaking from the heart about something far more personal, our elementary schools. These places that shaped us, grounded us, and gave us our first sense of community are now the places at risk of being closed. When I graduate, I won't have a place to walk down the halls for my senior walk. The elementary school that shaped my earliest memories, the one I thought I'd return to with pride, the one that welcomed me with open arms after moving halfway across the country, is being closed. And it hurts. I already lost my fifth grade graduation due to COVID. That moment was taken from me. And now so is the chance to revisit the halls where it all began. These closes aren't just logistical, they're personal. They erase the places where we first learned to read, to believe, to belong. They disrupt communities and scatter relationships and send a message that student experience is only secondary to efficiency. I'm not asking for perfection, I'm asking for perspective. Students deserve to be part of these conversations, not just as data points, but as people. We carry the impact of these decisions long before paperwork is filed. If we're trusted to represent our schools and competitions, performances, and leadership roles, we should be trusted to help protect the places that raised us. Let's make decisions that honor memory, community, and student voice. Because when we close a school, we don't just lose a building, we lose a piece of ourselves and a piece of our history. Thank you. And remember, our education is our future, not a budget.
Thank you, Speaker one. Speaker number three? Speaker number two did not show up, but Speaker number three, go for it.
Good evening, trustees. I'd like to raise three points regarding the demographic report. First, for transparency, please, once again, I'm asking you to amend the passa report to include elementary school charts that exclude early childhood populations and include transfer students. Since the district is centralizing early childhood, these populations should not be included in occupancy analyses of neighborhood schools when evaluating school consolidation. Excluding transfers misrepresents utilization. For example, Baghdad Elementary shows 56% projected occupancy in '26 and '27, when it's actually 83% with transfers. Elementary transfer rates have been stable for several years and thus we can project transfers with similar accuracy to other enrollment figures. Second, please consider a cost-saving lever that could reduce the '26-'27 budget by over half a million dollars without affecting students. Delay opening the early childhood center. The demographic report shows it isn't needed next year. Programs can stay where they are. And the district has done this before. Reed Elementary's opening was delayed from 2011 to 2014, saving about $600,000 a year. Third, I'd like you to consider suspending the pre-K 3 program. Funding for these students does not cover the costs. Most Texas districts don't have a pre-K because it's not effective. Suspending this unnecessary program would also free up classroom space. Thank you for your time. your time.
Thank you, Speaker number four.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank the resigning school board member for their time and service. Many Cypress Elementary parents will be watching as you select a new board member, and I'm sure that many parents from other impacted schools and the community in general will be watching carefully. Aside from finding ways to save money and improve funding within the current budget, my understanding is that the best opportunity for long-term financial solvency in the district seems to be a higher student allotment. I have been in contact with several state officials to this end during the last month, and I'll continue to contact them this fall.
Thank you, Speaker Four. And that concludes our citizen comments for tonight. Next, board members, we're going to move to consent agenda. Board members, do you have any motions related to consent agenda items?
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
A motion from Trish, a second from Gloria. All in favor? Five ayes, motion passes. And next we'll have the superintendent's report. Dr. Gearing, you're up.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, very excited that we had our LEAF Grand Patrol last week. This was really a reinvigoration of what it's been like in past years. We had a lot of LEAF board members there, some of our strongest supporters out in the community who are supporting LEAF, as well as several of our staff. And they managed to give away a lot of grants over the length of the day. They visited a lot of campuses in our school, and we're super grateful to all of the LEAF board members and staff who worked so hard on making this happen for our teachers. We're very happy to share Leander Middle School's Career Day with you. Last week, they hosted a day featuring an incredible lineup of professionals, including software developers, nurses, CEOs, veterinarians, line workers, firefighters, architects, orthodontists, musicians, and more. Events like these give our students exposure to future opportunities and occupations, gain real-world insight, and learn the habits that will help lead them to success. And we want to thank all of our community members who came out and volunteered this time to share their journeys and inspire our next-generation workforce. At Glenn High School, we had more than 160 colleges, universities, and military branches participating in our annual college fair, providing valuable information to students and families. We distributed over 600 programs. We had only about 50 remaining at the end of the evening, indicating an attendance of almost 550 families from across the district. Our Glenn High School National Honor Society students played an essential role in the event's success, welcoming guests, assisting college representatives with their setup, and ensuring that the evening ran smoothly. We're very excited to share that we had 214 students who have earned the AP Capstone Diploma. This is a program that we run through all of our high schools. You know that we've been talking a lot about the rigorous coursework in AP. You heard even our Avid presenters here tonight talking about the work that we do. An AP Capstone Diploma is really the pinnacle of what you can do with AP. We also had 29 students who earned AP Seminar and Research Certificates during the '24-'25 school year. This program helps students develop critical thinking, research, collaboration, and presentation skills that are essential to academic and career success. We're also very excited to announce that we just named 44 seniors across Leander ISD as National Merit Semi-finalists in the 71st Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. This is the highest number of National Merit Semi-finalists in Leander ISD history, with all six comprehensive high schools being represented with multiple scholars at each campus. And these students have an opportunity now to continue into the competition for some almost 7,000 National Merit Scholarships that are worth nearly $26 million that will be offered next spring. Just to point out that since 2023, we had 22 National Merit Semi-finalists in 2023, and have now doubled that number to 44. We were fortunate this week to host four listening sessions for our staff concerning two issues. Number one, post-legislative impacts. And then, secondly, the budget crisis that we're facing and the work that we're doing to continue to start to build our budget out for the '26-'27 school year. We did three of these on Tuesday afternoon at different times, and then one on Wednesday morning. We do them at different times to make sure that everybody has an opportunity, based on their school schedule, to attend one if they choose to. We had over 400 of our staff members attend and have conversation with us. They gave us a lot of information, some of that live and in person on the Google Meet, and some of that via the Q&amp;A portion of the Google Meet. We'll be putting up links to these recorded sessions so that others can also view and hear some of the questions that were asked and the answers that we provided, and also some of the incredibly strong feedback that we got over various different issues. We tried to focus the question this time around what are the things that are most important to you that you want us to steer away from as we start to consider expenditure reductions in the budget cycle going forward? And we really had a lot of really great feedback. And we also are opening up a thought exchange for them to continue to provide feedback from us. We reminded them that this is very early in the budget cycle. We're getting this feedback early on so that we can take action over the feedback that we get. And so we'll continue to bring through our budget workshops updated feedback to the board as we compile it. All right, we are celebrating through the superintendent's report now some of our appreciation weeks. And some of our hardest-working employees in the district are transportation and crossing guard crews. They do an incredible job. They're the first face that a lot of our students see first thing in the morning, sometimes as early as 6:00 or earlier in the morning, and often the last face that they see as they go home in the afternoon as well. If you've driven around any time during school, closing and opening times, you'll see our crossing guards all across our community, making sure that students have safe passage to school. And they do an incredible job and make sure that that happens. And so we want to give a huge shout-out to our transportation and crossing guard teams all across the district. We also want to give a huge shout-out to our Child Nutrition Services staff, who make sure that our students are fed breakfast and lunch every single day. They do an incredible job of preparing, serving, and then cleaning up after our students. And we are really, really grateful for the very healthy services that they give to our students every single day. We are also very focused on attendance in the district for two main reasons. Number one is our students cannot learn if they're not in school. And so we've worked really hard to make sure that we send that message home and are sharing that with both our students and our families, and making sure that we incentivize good attendance in the district. And so we have a monthly attendance contest. And so here are our winners for the latest month. We have... The Rouse Vita Pardon is indeed killing it. Our elementary winner was Parkside Elementary School with 97.2% attendance rate. At middle school, Stiles Middle School with 98.1% monthly attendance rate. And remember, that's one of our largest campuses, so that attendance rate has a massive impact for us. And then our high school winner was Rouse High School at 95.8%. And so remember, we're trying to get back to pre-COVID levels of attendance, which were right around 96%. So you can see that we're making a lot of headway towards that. We also want to give a special shout-out to Aiken Elementary, Knowles Elementary, and Reagan Elementary for being named our overall growth champions and showing the biggest improvement compared to last year by increasing their attendance rate by more than 1% each. And so we're not only celebrating absolute attendance, but also growth of attendance over time. And because of everybody's focus on this attendance, Leander ISD's attendance rate increased by 0.4% this September. That doesn't sound like a lot, but that equates to almost $1.2 million in additional revenue for the district, which is the cost of about 17 teachers. And so this is extremely important to us, and we continue to work hard to make sure that our students are in school so that they can learn, but that we can also maximize our revenue stream from the state of Texas. And I have to end with this. We're very grateful to our FFA team at Leander High School for hosting a celebrity livestock show, and our very own Trish Bodie. I call this a Cladstail pig. That's probably a butchering of... No, butchering is the wrong word. I'm going to rant. That was seriously bad. So thank you, Trish, for coming out and sharing the arena with us. We will say that both Trish and I got beaten by Dr. Rose, and so we had a lot of fun. And thank you to FFA for hosting us. With that, I'll take any questions.
Board members, any questions? I just need to get that picture so it can be Trish's new screen, screen what she calls me. All right, board members, since we have guest presenters joining us this evening, we're going to be adjusting the agenda, and we're going to start with 7C1, Discussion of the Annual Demographic Report, Population and Survey Analyst, PASA. Whenever y'all are ready, take it away. And real quick, board members, let's let some get through the presentation, if that's okay, and then ask questions. Do y'all prefer that? Is that okay? Y'all go through the presentation and then, okay. So jot your questions down, please, and then let's let them get through it.
And we're not going to use, like, a book to reference. We're just going to do straight the presentation.
I think they've got it right here. Sarah's on her way right now. Thank you, Sarah. Now you may take it away.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Gearing, yes, we have some props and some binders to hand out to you before we get started. But obviously, much-anticipated time of the year, especially surrounding the conversations that we've been having recently with our demographic annual report. We do this every single year around this time in October and November. I'm pleased to be joined by Dr. Stacy Tapera and Caroline Couch with Population and Survey Analysts. I do want... I said it last year, I'm going to say it again. With Leander ISD and the partnership with PASA is at 26 years now. And Dr. Stacy Tapera has been part of this partnership since 2005. And so when I talked about this last year, if you remember 2005, when Dr. Stacy Tapera came online, in the next five years, we opened 13 schools. And obviously, we are in a new reality right now. And so the report looks familiar, but what you're going to see is some of the content that was shared in August about the methodology, they've folded that in. And obviously, it looks a little different because they went through a rebranding process. But I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Tapera and Caroline Couch to run through this. And then when we get to the end, we'll take as many questions as you have. We want to make sure that you have all the content and the information you need.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. This is live? Okay, great. Thank you. It is so nice to be back tonight. I'm Stacy Tapera. Caroline Couch is with me. Let me begin by reminding everyone that, yes, and since 2005, you have seen my face sitting here, but I am not the only one contributing to these reports. We have an entire team behind us, that everybody on this screen has contributed to this project, and everyone has a real vested interest. And so know that it's not just Stacy and Caroline in front of you. You guys have heard most of this in depth in August, and so I won't go into great detail. But all of these demographic studies involve collecting background data that goes into the map, the big wall maps that many of you have copies of, and we've brought copies with us tonight, big maps. Geocoding the student population, that's taking every student that is in your system and placing them on a map. That's our starting point. We look at the ratios of students per home. That's density of students in each neighborhood and how those differ across the district. Alternative educational opportunities, you will hear a lot about that tonight. That is having an impact, a significant impact on most districts in Texas, Leander included. Housing and economic trends, you'll hear about from Caroline. And then we roll all of this and other information into our model for projecting future enrollment projections and what that means long-term for the district. You saw this in August. This is our demographic life cycle. Just to remind you guys that every neighborhood, every geographic area, every school district goes through a normal demographic life cycle. And when we began working with Leander in 1999, Leander was square in the high-growth phase. And as Jeremy mentioned earlier, we are now past the high-growth stage and approaching the stabilization stage. And I say approaching stabilization because Leander ISD is so large geographically that there are parts of the district that are growing still, and there are parts of the district that have stabilized, and there are parts of the districts that are declining. And so that is a normal part of the demographic life cycle. So let's get started with some of the basic geographic trends within this district. This is a schematic map of Region 13. And the districts shown in red are the districts that have gained the most enrollment over the past five years. And the districts shown in blue have lost students over the past five years. So as you can see, since 2019, Leander ISD has gained about 1,200 students, and that ranks you ninth in highest growth within Region 13 over five years. When we look at that as a percentage, because of Leander's pure size, sheer size and enrollment, you're by far the largest in these top-ranked, high-growth districts. Because of your size, your growth is ranked at 27th in Region 13 over the past five years. This gives us some basic demographic information about the, not just the students, but the entire population that lives within Leander ISD. This data comes from the American Community Survey, which is part of the US Census. And so this data tells us that overall, the population living within the boundaries of Leander ISD has grown by about 12% over the past five years. The median age has gotten older, and the proportion of the population that are school-aged children has gotten smaller. And so those two statistics go hand-in-hand logically. The population is more educated than it was five years ago, and the median income has gone up as well. Now, this is the enrollment history, the trends in enrollment that have happened over the past 10 years in Leander. You can see that in the first few, five years of this graph, we had steady growth in enrollment. We then had the COVID year, which was a drop in enrollment, and then recovery of that drop in the next two years after COVID. But then after that, we've seen a stabilization, and we did not return to the same high-growth patterns that we saw pre-COVID. And so we are realizing that this is a new normal. This is... We're far enough out to recognize that this is a new normal. It's not just a blip. And that prior to COVID, as is seen a little bit more obviously in this chart, this is the same data, it's just shown differently. Prior to COVID, the district gained about 1,000 students or so per year. And then the COVID year, and then the recovery year. But then after that, look at those other bars to the right. After the recovery, instead of gaining 1,000 students a year, we gained 600 students a year. And then the next year, we only gained 200 students. And the next year, we only gained 15 students. And this year, we have declined in enrollment since last year of about 750 students. So this makes it really clear to me that this is a new trend, that this is a new reality. And there are a lot of moving parts that are driving this. Now, we hear a lot about births in the district and how many babies are being born here, in Texas, across the nation, everything. So this is one of the, one of the data points that goes into our projections. The bottom line that is blue, but on this screen, it looks black, the bottom line represents the number of babies that have been born to mothers that live within Leander ISD. And those, that number of babies is shifted five years so that it lines up with the year that those babies will go to kindergarten. Okay? Now, you'll notice that the green line, the kindergarten line, is greater than the birth line. That means that there, that a number of babies are born here. And five years later, more kindergarteners start school here. And why does that happen? Well, it's been happening because of all of the new housing growth. There were a lot of opportunities for toddlers to move into Leander ISD, into new housing. They were born somewhere else, they moved here, and they entered kindergarten here. That dotted line represents the current year. And I want to draw your attention to everything just to the left of the dotted line. You can see the COVID year, that's the craziness. Everything since COVID, you can see that the birth line has been going up. There were more babies born each year, not a lot more, but more. And the kindergarten enrollment has gone down every year since the year after COVID. So more babies have been born, but fewer kindergarteners have enrolled five years later. And so why is that happening? We'll get into that. So to the right of the dotted line are the four years where babies have been born, but they have not yet, they're not yet old enough to go to kindergarten. They haven't shown up in kindergarten yet. So we see a big growth that should be coming in kindergarten. But we also see the kindergarten trend is going down. And so this, this leads me to tell you some, to put this into perspective relative to Region 13 and the state of Texas in general, I mean, yes, overall. You'll notice that in both of these graphs, the green line, the kindergarten enrollment, is lower than the birth line, right? In the last one, in Leander ISD, in the past, there were more kindergarteners than there were babies born. That's just the opposite overall in Texas and even in Region 13. And so why is that? Because babies born don't always enter into the ISD and return and join that kindergarten enrollment green line. So the difference between those lines are babies that are choosing alternative educational opportunities rather than enrolling in ISDs. And so you remember that your green line was going down. And this year, basically met the birth line. And so we anticipate that this could be more like the reality that Leander sees in the next few years. Let's talk a little bit about our process and the past and current students. One of the first steps that we take is to take from you, from the district, a database of all of the students and their addresses. All of the students who are enrolled in Leander ISD and their addresses. We place those addresses on the map. That's called geocoding. And that becomes our starting point for our, doing the projections. So in this map, the students that are enrolled currently are shown in maroon or red. And the students that were enrolled three years ago in the fall of '22 are shown in sort of gray on top. Now, this is, this is layered like this on this map on purpose so that the only time you see current students in red is when they are not hidden by a previous student in gray. So those red students, the current students that you can see on this map, are the only places where students are living now. And there were no students living there three years ago. And so that points to the areas of new housing construction and new sections of subdivisions that brought students in. This is what we call a cohort table to illustrate the bulges in cohorts in grade levels as they move through the grade levels. So every column is a different year of enrollment. And every cell represents the number of students that were enrolled in that grade. The grade levels are going down. The red cells represent the grade levels that had the biggest population, the most students enrolled. And the blue cells represent the fewest students enrolled. And so you'll first notice that the kindergarten is always the smallest class size. And then the second point to make is that there was a bulge in student population in cohort that was most obvious starting in about 2018, 19, in the fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade range. And as those kids aged to the next grade level each year, you can see that bulge move with them. And each year, they were, or there was a new kindergarten class coming in that was very small. Now that those kids are in high school and leaving high school, as they graduate and are replaced by these small kindergarten classes, there will be a natural deceleration of growth or in some cases, decline in enrollment simply because of this bulge that is passing through the grade levels and being replaced by small kindergarten classes. I mentioned ratios of students per home. This is an important part that we look at in making our projections because we need to understand the density of each neighborhood so that we can use comparables to, to project how many students will be yielded in, in new homes that are under construction. So district-wide, there's an average of .48 students per home in single-family homes. And district-wide, .26 students per multifamily unit. This is, the .26 being smaller than, multifamily being smaller than single-family is very normal, very typical. And, and both of these are fairly typical. Although .48 as a single-family ratio is a bit lower than, than some suburban districts like this. And it's important to note, note that 10 years ago, 13, 12, 12 years ago, the ratios of students per home was .65. And now it's .48. So you can see how that decline has happened. In other words, even with all of the thousands of new homes that have been built over the past 12 years, the number of students moving into those new homes is not as high as it used to be 12 years ago. Also equally important is what I just told you. That .48 number is the district-wide overall, total students divided by total housing units. But that varies significantly between subdivisions. And so these are the master plan communities to give you a range of how different the ratios, the density of students per home is in some of these areas. So for example, Treviso has a very low student ratio at .39 students per home, whereas Parkside on the River tops out at .83 students per home. And you can see the district's average overall in the middle at .48. It's important to note that all of these have been declining. I showed you the overall district number declined, but also these master plan communities have been declining as well. And so places like Steiner Ranch, for example, that have .7 students per home, that is a dense, a student-dense ratio. That is a neighborhood that is student-oriented. And it's significantly less student-oriented than it was 10 years ago. Because 10 years ago, that ratio was 1.08 students per home, right? So it's important to understand not just the static density of students, but how that is changing over time. Okay, so why are these student ratios declining? The most significant and easily identifiable and easily measured reason is alternative educational opportunities. In this case, charter schools that are enrolling students who live in Leander ISD. So this is a busy map, but I, I find it quite telling. And that is that 10 years ago, in 2014, there were 25 charter schools in the area that enrolled students who lived in Leander ISD. Now, there are 68 charter schools who enroll students who live within Leander ISD. So that number tripled almost, no, almost, yes, almost tripled. Because since then, in the last 10 years, 43 charter schools have either opened or have started enrolling residents of Leander ISD who didn't enroll residents of Leander ISD 10 years ago. Okay? That's pretty significant. It's also significant that five of these, no, four of these campuses, so the navy dots that are within the district, four of them opened in the last five years. And we'll get to that in, in depth here in a minute. So I just told you about the past. Now let's talk about the future. The yellow dots on the map represent sites of potential future charter schools that could open within the district in the future. In fact, Basis is very near the Harmony campus that just opened this year. Basis is planning to open next year. The other yellow dot that you see on the map is an idea location. They own the land, but we don't have any information about plans for building a school there. There's also an idea Georgetown that also is a parcel that is owned, but we don't have any information about when that might open. However, we have to keep our eye on those every year because they can, they can file an amendment and, and build a campus and open quickly. And sometimes they can, for example, the Valor Campus that opened, they had, they owned a site in the Larkspur area. And they opened a temporary site last year on Crystal Falls Parkway in a facility that used to be a daycare. And so that was a real surprise to us because it happened almost overnight because they didn't have to build anything. So they enrolled all of those students on the Crystal Falls, Crystal Falls Parkway site while they built the Larkspur site. And now this year, they have opened the Larkspur site. And that's what you see as the, as the navy dot up in the far north of the district. Okay, we have had some questions during this study about where do students, where do children live within Leander ISD who do not attend Leander ISD? And so that's what this map is addressing. This is one of the data sources that we have. This is TEA data about students who are living here but attending charter schools. And this is grouped by attendance zone, by elementary attendance zone. And so if we start in 2021, fall of '21, and, and then go through the, the four steps of the next three years until '24, you can see how those attendance zones are getting darker red. That means there are, in the darkest shade of red, that means that there are over 100 students living in that attendance zone that are not attending that school because they're going to a charter school. And we see that, that intensification of the red colors that corresponds precisely with the opening of those four campuses that I pointed out a minute ago, going down the center part of the district that have opened in the past few years. And so this just allows us to begin the conversation about actions that the district might choose to take to address this population that's living here but, but not attending Leander ISD schools. We get asked all the time about the homeschooling population. And it is a growing consideration. And it is not any easier to answer than it was a few years ago. And that is because the state of Texas does not require anyone to register their child as homeschooled or submit any curriculum notification or anything, request. So we, the estimates of how, we get asked all the time, how many students are homeschooled in our, in, in general, in our district or in Texas in general? And the estimates vary wildly. So the U.S. Census estimates about 350,000 students in Texas are homeschooled. But the Texas Homeschool Coalition estimates anywhere between 500 and 620,000 students are homeschooled. So it's really hard for us to, to be able to, to pin that down because of the lack of reporting. We do know that, we know anecdotally that this population is growing, that there are, there are more parents, families choosing homeschooling for a variety of reasons, but it's all anecdotal. Things like, for example, wanting the flexibility of being able to travel and still, still have schooling from a, from a remote location. So back to the numbers that we can measure. This is the, the students who live in Leander ISD who are attending other public schools. The blue bars represent the number of students attending charter schools. The maroon bars represent the number of students attending other ISDs. That has remained fairly stable over the decade. And the green represents students who are enrolled in virtual programs. And you can see that the, the green bars are small, they're small numbers. But you can see that they have increased dramatically over the past few years. And we anticipate that this will also continue to accelerate in virtual schools with the passage of Senate Bill 569, allowing ISDs to have their own virtual programs. The arrow that you see at the bottom of the chart are the number of students that live somewhere else who are transferring into Leander ISD. And so while that number has grown, it hasn't grown nearly as much as the, as the blue bar, for example, representing the students transferring out to charters. So how do we summarize all of this? Of the students living within Leander ISD boundaries, about ballpark 300 are enrolled in virtual schools. About 3,000 are enrolled in charter schools. About 400 in other ISDs and about 1,600 in private schools. So that means that of the students living here, about almost 89% are enrolled here in Leander ISD. And five years ago, that number was about 93%. Five years ago, the number of charter campuses was considerably fewer. And the number of students in charters was about 1,000, 1,300 or so compared to 3,000 now. So while charters makes up 6% of the population now, it was 3% five years ago. So that's, that's the biggest difference. And at this point, I'm going to turn the mic over to Caroline. And she's going to talk about the economy and the new housing construction.
All right, thank you, Stacy. Good evening, board. Before we get into housing details for Leander, we're just going to look at a snapshot of housing market trends as of August 2025, when the study was conducted. First off, home sales have increased 11.45% year-over-year, which shows continued demand and growth in your market despite higher borrowing costs. Second, the median home price now sits at about 436,000, which is down from about 484,000 from last year, which reflects strong buyer activity and some ongoing relief efforts on affordability in the district. Finally, the market's months of inventory was down to 5.26, which indicates we are edging closer to a more balanced market between the buyers and sellers here. And then And then, looking at this chart at the bottom of the slide, we can see how interest rates heavily influence monthly mortgage rates. For example, based on their median home price, at around 4% rates, a $400,000 home would cost a little over 1,500 a month. But at 7%, that jumps to over $2,100. So, as of August 2025, the average 30-year fixed mortgage interest rate was around 6.5%, which means that buyers are feeling this impact a little bit more acutely out of their monthly budgets. But overall, while prices remain strong, the higher interest rates continue to shape that buyer behavior in the district and influence the pace of the new home sales. So, this graphic shows the neighborhood codes that POSI uses to organize the district in for our analysis. Each outlined area represents a small section of the district containing one or more housing developments or parcels of land. Now, these shapes are built using major roads, your attendant zones, and parcel data, which really allows us to track that growth in housing activity at a very local level. So, this framework helps us clearly connect the new development patterns to school planning and the enrollment forecast that we put together. This map highlights the most impactful single-family developments or those that are expected to add 150 homes or more during the projection period for the district. The green areas show subdivisions that are actively building. And the aqua shapes are planned but not yet under construction. The largest active project is Treviso, probably no surprise to any of you, with about 820 to 840 lots left to build. And they're expected to build out about 2031 at this point. Other major active developments include Wildspring, Edgewood, Barksdale, Parkside on the River, and Palmera Bluff. All of these together contributing about 2,100 homes during the projection period. Now, on the plan side, there are about 3,000 additional homes that are anticipated from projects like the Freeu and Ding tracks up in the Northwest and the Burleson Ranches and Robertson tracks. But many of these are still in the early planning phases. But nearly 60% of new housing in LISD over the next decade is projected to be from your single-family developments. Now, focusing on those five largest single-family developments that are expected to shape growth over the next 10 years, Treviso remains the biggest driver with about 825 new homes still to come. And they will be at about 3,000 units at total buildout. Now, the Freeu and Ding tracks, like I mentioned, in the Northwest are next with concept plans for around 1,300 homes at this point, though no developer has yet to be identified. The North Fork Palmer in Cedar Park could add up to 1,000 residential units pending a rezoning proposal for mixed-use development. The Burleson Ranch and Robertson track, Roberts tracks, sorry, account for about 550 homes near Aiken Elementary and Styles Middle School. And the construction plans are already moving forward on this site. Lastly, the Hero Way Development could contribute nearly 400 homes pending approval to establish its own municipal utility district. So, the heat map on this slide shows us how the single-family housing growth shifts across the district over the projection period. So, on the map on the left showing the first five years, we see steady new housing activity is concentrated mostly east of Ronald Reagan Boulevard, primarily in neighborhoods like Edgewood, Parkside of the River, Barksdale, and Wildspring. But by the time we reach the right-hand of, right-hand side of the map showing the full projection period, that growth clearly moves over to the west and northwest of the district with those large projects like Treviso, Leander Estates, Hilltop Ranch, and the Freeu and Ding tracks really driving that expansion. It's important to remember that many of these future communities are located in ETJs of your cities and in areas with more challenging terrain to build in. So, their timing and density are a little bit uncertain, but we anticipate that they could potentially be some, a little bit lower density and higher-cost developments that might take a little bit longer to come online. But we are seeing a clear shift from steady near-term growth in the east to that longer-term development in the Northwest, signaling how the district's growth corridors are shifting. Now, we'll transition over to multifamily and rental developments in Leander ISD. The black dots on this map indicate where your existing complexes are. The dark green circles are newly completed projects that are starting to lease up. The light green dots show those that are under construction. And the gray circles are planned developments that have already secured their approvals or their entitlements. Now, the table to the right lists the most impactful projects or those with 250 or more units, which will be the main sources of that multifamily growth over the next 10 years. However, even with this growth, the impact on student enrollment is still expected to be limited. Most of these projects are Class A properties, which means they are higher rent, smaller units, and they have really strong amenity offerings, which primarily are attracting young professionals to the district, not necessarily going to be yielding students because you won't see a lot of families with schoolchildren. So, while multifamily construction continues to expand and diversify, the student generation rate still remains much lower than that what we're seeing of new single-family housing. So, building on that last slide, we're going to look at, a little bit closer look at multifamily and rental housing across the district. Overall, we're expecting about 11,000 new rental occupancies, which will make up about 40% of all the new housing units during the projection period. This includes 11 projects already completed and currently leasing, six currently in development, 13 in planning, and another 27 sites that are, have been identified as likely for future multifamily development. We're also seeing an emerging build-to-rent trend with more than 400 single-family homes that will act as rental properties. Now, when we combine this with what we just discussed at the end of this previous slide, the picture becomes a little bit more clear that while multifamily continues to expand, its impact on student enrollment still just remains limited. We are anticipating it's only going to account for 22% of the district's students. So, again, single-family housing will continue to be that primary driver of future growth in Leander ISD. So, over the next decade in total, Leander is projected to add about 27,000 new housing units. Again, the majority of that growth, about 55% will come from new single-family homes. And then, multifamily will come in second, making up about 41% of those new units. The smaller but emerging segments include build-to-rent homes, accounting for just about 1.5%, and age-restricted housing, just over 2%, but those will not give you any students. To wrap up the housing section, growth across Leander ISD is going to continue, but it's going to become more concentrated. The southern and central areas of the district are largely built out. So, a lot of the new activity is happening along the northern, the eastern, and the western sides of the district where land is still available. Single-family housing remains pretty consistent from year to year, while multifamily development numbers fluctuate a little bit more. But this is really depending on market timing and absorption rates. Finally, part of the reason we're seeing that fluctuation is because several projects in the district are in planning or on pause, especially these larger mixed-use projects and multifamily developments as builders are waiting for stronger market conditions before moving forward. Given that, the district can expect steady but more moderate housing growth, really just shaped by your land availability and the market pacing moving forward. And then, with that, I'm going to hand it back to Stacy to explain how all of that turns into the students in your district.
Before we get off the topic of housing, you've just heard a lot about new housing and new housing construction. But a topic that comes up in many districts, including this one, is housing regeneration. And so, the question is, in my neighborhood, I see a lot of new families moving in. And I see babies out on walks in the neighborhood. And I think that my neighborhood is regenerating and is going to have more students in the schools in the future because I see houses being sold. And so, we have put together this slide to explain a really complicated concept. And so, bear with me as I walk you through it. When you have a new construction neighborhood, like Caroline has been talking about, represented at the top of this graph in green, when you have a house that sells to someone, what started before that house sold, it was just an empty lot of land. There were no students living there. When that house is built and sold, it can be sold to someone either who has a student in Leander ISD or does not have a student in Leander ISD. And that either goes from zero to zero students or from zero to one student. Regardless, there will be growth in enrollment in those neighborhoods because there is no opportunity for anyone to move out. But when you have an existing neighborhood shown in blue, there are four different permutations when a house sells. If a house is on the market, either it contains a Leander ISD student or it does not. Those are two options. When it sells to a new owner, that new owner will either have a Leander ISD student or will not. So, together, that makes four permutations of what could happen with student population. And as you can see on this graph, those permutations net out to zero change, to stabilization, not growth and not decline. And so, this is what we mean when we say regeneration of a neighborhood is young families moving in and that creates stabilization of enrollment. It does not create growth because there is always a population of students moving out that balances that out. Okay. So, now, let's talk about enrollment projections overall. The first question everybody asks is, well, what about last year's, the previous projections? And so, these show the last three years of our projections compared to the actual enrollment at the PIM snapshot date. And so, as you can see, the enrollment this year has gone down and was lower than we projected. And so, what happened? What has changed? Well, in new housing construction, there were more houses built than we had constructed, had projected. But there were fewer Leander ISD students in those houses. Among the houses that were built, the new houses that had Leander ISD students, the proportion of students that were very young, kindergarten through third grade, was significantly smaller than the population of older students. And indicating that, that maybe it's a cost issue. Maybe it's more of those families choosing alternative educational opportunities for their youngest children. But regardless, it sets up for reduced growth in the future as those small portions and populations of the youngest students age through. What else happened this year that impacted these enrollment numbers? Well, Harmony Leander opened this year. And as we have recognized in a number of different districts, as charter schools are opening recently, they are opening with more enrollment the first year than in the past. It used to be that we could estimate that a new charter school would open not completely full. You know, each grade level would have maybe 60 or 70% of the possible occupancy. And so, we projected for that. And then, in following years, we projected more students to be pulled into that remaining capacity. In general, we're seeing that many charter schools are opening at capacity in year one. Another thing that happened this year, I mentioned it earlier, is the Valor Charter System had, last year, opened a temporary location in a previous daycare facility. And this year, they opened their Larkspur site one year earlier than we had anticipated based on published information. And as a result, when they vacated those students from the temporary Crystal Falls location, they left kindergarten through second at the Crystal Falls location, and they moved third through 12th to the new Larkspur location and expanded the enrollment of K through second graders significantly at the Crystal Falls location. And that can be correlated with the enrollment at Whitestone and Baghdad and Camacho. All, those attendance zones all meet right at the location of that Crystal Falls Parkway site. And so, all of those campuses had fewer students than we had projected. There are other intangibles that we can't really measure, but just this growing number of parents who are choosing non-traditional educational options, including homeschooling and virtual schools. And finally, that incoming, the size of the incoming kindergarten class. I've said it a lot tonight. I've said it a lot for years. But it's one of the biggest wild cards. And it has an impact for the next 13 years on enrollment. And this year's kindergarten class is the smallest since 2007. So, the question, many questions have arisen lately about our long-term projections and the wisdom of making decisions based on these long-term projections when they can fluctuate so much. And it's a fair question. Now, remember that projections are projections. They are not predictions. And we do not have a crystal ball. We have to make projections based on what we know at the time. And we have to make some assumptions about what could happen in the future. 10 years ago, the assumptions that we made when we were sitting here 10 years ago are on the slide. So, we can, we projected that new housing would continue. And at the time, it was booming. And we projected that it would grow at a reduced rate later in the decade, which it has. But we also projected that the ratio of students per home would increase in that, in those new homes. And that has not happened, as I showed you earlier. We assumed that the kindergarten class, that a slightly greater proportion of young students would be moving in. The kindergarten class would increase in size, assuming that interest rates for mortgages didn't rise appreciably. We have seen the opposite, that the kindergarten class has gotten smaller. We assumed that there would be about three complexes per year of new apartments opening for the first three years. And then, about five to six complexes per year beyond that. That actually happened almost perfectly, almost the exact same number. And so, that was an assumption that held surprisingly for 10 years. We projected, or we assumed that relocation from the urban core to suburban districts would remain steady as it was in 2014, that unemployment rates would remain steady, and that interest rates wouldn't increase by more than 2% over current years. Now, let's jump forward to today. Those were the assumptions 10 years ago. Today, we realize that there have been some cataclysmic events that have happened over the past decade. All right? There, there was a global pandemic. There was a, a significant challenge in school funding. And there was, while we knew that charter schools were on the horizon, there has been a massive increase in charter schools in the area, and not just here, everywhere in Texas, that was well beyond anything that we could have imagined 10 years ago. And so, the global pandemic and the funding crisis was not in our assumptions, were not in our assumptions 10 years ago. We didn't see those coming. I wish we could have, especially because our whole business is based on trying to look around the corner and trying to figure out what could be coming. So, looking forward, I encourage you to remember that there could be other unpredictable factors around the corner. There could be another global pandemic, but there also might not. I can't, I can't make the assumption that there will be, but I also can't guarantee that there won't be. And so, what I can say is that you are not alone in these challenges that you face. And some of our other clients, who are also large districts facing the same kind of challenges that you are, are finding how important it is to understand the fluidity of projections and understand that they are based on assumptions that could be, could be true or could be not true. And there could be unpredictable and, at the time, unimaginable events that could significantly impact enrollment. And these districts are recognizing that we still have to move forward and we still have to make and we still have to make decisions about long-range planning based on the best information that we have available. And in the absence of a perfectly clear crystal ball, this is, this is what we have to work with. And we spend our lives trying to give you the best researched information available. So let's talk about the, all of the factors that go into these projections. I, I won't spend a lot of time on this slide because you've already heard it. New housing construction and the economy drive growth. And those are only happening in parts of the district. How many babies are born in the district? It impacts the incoming kindergarten class, but it's not a one-to-one relationship as we have seen. The cohorts, aging bulges in cohorts that age through the system impact enrollment, students moving in and out, migrating in and out, the regeneration of existing homes with younger families. And finally, alternative educational opportunities and how many students they enroll who live in Leander ISD. All of those impact our projections model. So as I've mentioned, every year, we start fresh with a clean slate. We have to reassess all of the assumptions and update our projections based on what we know to be true now, even if it wasn't true last year. We come up with a new set of assumptions and develop our forecast for 10 years forward. That dotted line that you see, the black dotted line, is our 10-year forecast. And you can see that it's pretty stable over the next 10 years. The years of high growth in Leander ISD are over because of the natural demographic life cycle, the fewer new housing opportunities that are here. And you heard that from Caroline. And largely, that's simply because the district is nearing build-out. And so then those projections are bracketed in by a reduced scenario and an accelerated scenario. And those each have their sets of assumptions, all of the things that could be different, that could, that could influence enrollment, either upwards or down, barring unforeseen monsters around the corner, like another global pandemic. So this map represents the neighborhood codes and how many students we project to be added or lost from each neighborhood code over the next 10 years. And this is just to illustrate areas of growth and decline. And so you can see around the west, north, and eastern parts of the district, the general red areas. Those are the areas of projected growth. And through the central and south parts of the district are the general areas of stabilization and in some cases, decline. Now, before we get into discussions about the projections by school, I need to remind you that the projections you just saw by neighborhood code are the projections of resident students. We are demographers. We project where people will live. That number of resident students is not necessarily the number of students that will show up at the school because of programs, special programs, and students transferring among schools. So I will show you, in general, the numbers that we project are number of resident students, but we also have to keep in mind the transfers. Although those transfers can change if you decide to move a program to a different campus. And that's why we project residents. Now, this is a similar heat map, but this is by elementary attendance zone. And so again, the red attendance zones represent the, the attendance zones that are projected to gain more than 100 students over the next 10 years. And again, you see the same U-shaped ring around the west, north, and east part of the district. Whereas districts in the central and south part of the district are largely in the sort of white and blue shades, which represents stabilization or decline in resident student population. Again, we have these colored maps, but this represents the utilization of these schools in five years and in 10 years. And I'd like you to just focus on the colors because the schools in light blue are schools that we project in either five years on the left or 10 years on the right to be at less than 80% utilization when you consider the resident student population. And in dark blue, those schools are at less than 60% utilization. On the other end, the orange schools are greater than 100% utilization and the red schools are greater than 120% utilization. And so if we look at the five-year map on the left, you see the same bifurcation that we saw before of growth in the north, on the west, north, and east, and stabilization or decline in the central and south. We see at 10 years that that growth in the north is magnified with the darker red. We see that in comparing five years to 10 years, that the, that the growth in the north is happening first at Tarvin and North Elementarys. Those are the campuses projected to be overutilized first. And then other campuses along the west, north, and east are all projected in 10 years to be overutilized. The blues, the blue schools in year five and the blues are generally blue schools in year 10. So our projections are largely stabilization with a little bit of decline in some of those schools. Now, this is a lot of numbers and it's really just here for you to have reference later. But I will draw your attention. This is really complicated. Let me walk you through it. The, the, I mentioned resident students. These are the number of projected resident students to live in each of these attendance zones next year, in five years, and in 10 years. Those are the three columns that have colors on them. The colors represent the utilization, just like we saw on the previous map. This is basically the same information you just saw on the previous map. This is just in table form, if you're a table learner or a geographic learner. So the colors represent the same utilization, below 60%, between 60% and 80%, et cetera. The three columns to the right of each of these give you another level of information because I just told you about the, these are resident students projected. But it's also important to understand, especially for the short term, where the transfers are happening in and out of each school. And so those three columns on the right are the transfers in, the transfers out, and the net transfers. And so I want to draw your attention to two different schools for two different reasons. For example, Baghdad. Let's look at Baghdad. We see that Baghdad is projected to have 481 resident students next year. And you, anyone who knows anything about Baghdad, know that, knows that that's very low, that there are way more students than that in Baghdad right now. And so your first thought is to think, Stacy is crazy. She doesn't know what she's talking about. And I remind you that there is a bilingual program at Baghdad that is pulling students in, they're transferring in. And so you can see on the right side of that graph that there are 333 students who live outside of Baghdad who attend Baghdad. There are also 99 students who live in Baghdad who attend somewhere else for other reasons, for a net change of 234 students attending Baghdad who don't live there. The vast majority of those are because of the bilingual program. And I bring this to your attention because you can see that in the, in the utilizations, those utilization numbers do not include those bilingual students in that program. And still, Baghdad is projected to be at 133% utilization of just resident students in 10 years. So in other words, that bilingual program right now is taking up space in Baghdad as it needs to so that Baghdad is well utilized currently. But as more students move in, Baghdad will be, become more crowded as, as more residents are living there. And so this is an example of, not anytime soon, but this is an example of when programmatic shifts can be used to, to postpone the need for new construction. Okay? Now, I also attract your attention to Fabian. Fabian has a pre-K program. And most of the pre-K students attending that program at Fabian don't live in Fabian. They transfer in. And however, there is an almost equal number of students who transfer out of Fabian for other reasons. And so the net change is not significant. It's a loss of 12 students. But know that those pre-K students that are transferring into Fabian are not included in those utilization numbers. Okay? Also, one last note about these numbers. Next year, when the Hall C ECC opens in the north, those pre-K and ECC students who are living in elementary schools in the north that are counted in these resident numbers will be pulled out of those campuses to attend the ECC. So that will be a further level of shifting. Dr. Gearing?
Can I, can I just clarify and make sure that I understand using those two examples again, just to make sure. So Baghdad in '26, '27 has 481 resident students. We have 333 kids transferring in, 99 transferring out. So their actual number of students is 481 plus 234?
That's correct.
Okay. And then at Fabian, it's the same thing. They have 353 students right now for next year. 110 of those transfer in. We have 122 transferring out for a loss of 12. So their actual number is 353 minus 12?
That's correct. Okay, let's move on to middle schools. The middle school attendance zones are, you see the same general pattern of red versus blue. Growth projected in the north and stabilization and some decline projected in the south in the blue schools. Let's look at the utilization. The first thing you notice on this map is there's no red. The middle schools are in good condition as far as not facing significant overcrowding in the next 10 years or so. So we see when we go from the five-year utilization to 10-year utilization, that in the north, the Leander and Danielson, for example, are white or at about between 80% and 100% utilized in five years. And they move to orange for 100% to 120% utilized in 10 years. Henry and Wiley, both along the east, change from white to blue in their utilization. And then in the south, Four Points and Canyon Ridge remain dark blue with stabilization and slight decline. So then again, the same data as we walked through with the elementary schools. This is the middle school data. Again, resident students and utilization based on those resident students with transfers to the right. And you can see that the transfers are not as significant as, as they are at the elementary level because of the bilingual and pre-K programs. And then finally, at the high school level, again, we see the greatest growth projected in Glenn Attendance Zone in the far north and stabilization and decline in the blue zones in the central and south. The five-year to 10-year utilization comparison, there is, we see all of the same things we've seen at the other grade levels in that, for example, Glenn goes from white to orange from five years to 10 years. But there's an interesting thing to notice, and that is Rouse. In five years, Rouse is projected to be overutilized at 126%. However, that is a temporary overcrowding issue because of the, those bulges that I've been talking about in the student population. So the, there is a bulge working its way through the Rouse Attendance Zone that will manifest in those middle years. And then as that bulge ages out and graduates, Rouse is projected to go back down to a more manageable utilization. And so that can be a decision that the district makes about short-term management of that overcrowding and how that can be handled. And so again, the same table data, you see that one red cell for Rouse right in the middle of projected overutilization. But then it's projected to go back down to 108% utilized. And also keep in mind that right now, there are net 98 students transferring out of Rouse so that overcrowding won't be felt exactly that severely. And so now, I'm just going to leave you with a few takeaway messages. And that is, we talked about the cohorts aging through and the large high school classes now that are exiting and being replaced by small incoming kindergarten classes. New housing continues to add about 900 to 1,000 students per year in this district. And you heard about that from Caroline. That growth is expected to stabilize towards the end of the projection period as the district grows nearer to build-out. We talked about births that have happened within Leander ISD and how those births have increased over the past few years, but the kindergarten class size has declined. And then finally, alternative educational opportunities, charter schools, private schools, and virtual schools have had a significant impact. And the proportion of LISD residents who are attending charter schools has now increased to 6% of the population. And so I just want to leave you with the message that in large districts like this, this is not unusual to have areas of growth and decline at the same time. It's, it's part of the natural demographic life cycle of those neighborhoods individually. And, and so this is, these are challenges that you are facing, but you are not the only ones. And so with that, I can take questions.
Well, thank you so much. This presentation, you know, I've always loved these kind of presentations, but this one, I feel like, is very relatable to everything that we're going through. And it was also very eye-opening for me in regards to the educational opportunities. During these conversations, we hear a lot from some of the campuses that are under-enrolled. Well, students are leaving to charters. Well, the data doesn't support that. It was eye-opening to me to see where the majority of the students in our district are, where we are losing to charters. And it's up in the north side. So it's kind of really flipped my way of thinking in regards to how do we get these students come back? So I appreciate y'all really doing your due diligence on that. So board members, let's open the questions up and let's get started. So Gore?
Yeah, I, I had that same thought. And I think if we can go over to slide 35, because I think this is one that we do hear a lot about. And, and it's the regeneration versus growth, right? And I think I'm gonna have to take a screenshot of this image and to have it in my phone favorited so when, I think people stop us all, right? And say, no, I saw someone moving next door and they have two babies. And, you know, and so we see the regeneration. I think a lot of what, what we're thinking about too is, actually, it's just a lot, right? I mean, when we talk about the charters and, so I'm thinking about, okay, it's regeneration is not, it's not going to drive that growth. It's gonna staple, stabilize in some of these areas. And so that kind of leads me to the conversation we had with you, Jeremy, two weeks ago, when we were creating we were creating this charter, right, for us as a board, just making us think about what is, what are those, when we talked about what are the triggers or what are, you know, those pieces, really thinking about what what the stabilization numbers are for some of these schools, because I think a lot of us keep thinking, well, they're gonna regenerate, and those numbers are going to come back higher. And where we're going to see growth is where there's land, where there's new houses. And in these areas, it's really gonna be stabilizing, so in making us rethink, right? What what are those numbers that hit those levers? And and how do we staff schools for stabilization? And then, what is that noise? I think the other piece is, yeah, it's making me like pause, because it's like, am I doing that, right? I don't know.
I think, so, no, I think, hello, hello. Yeah, I think it's all you.
Okay. All right. It's okay. It's like I'm drumming over here or something, but I'm not, I swear. When we talk about, I think a lot of it right now is just processing through, what are the impacts? And how do these, this data feed into this charter we created, right? And and I mean, I know we all sat around that, and I think so much of our community is waiting for the regeneration to drive growth. And and that's not going to happen. It's gonna stabilize. And so we, as a board, thinking about what that looks like for our community. And same, I had that same realization when we looked at charters. We hear a lot from families in the south where if we did things differently, we would be losing so many families to those charter schools. Or not losing to charters, we are gonna lose to private schools. And I thought about what you said, you know, we don't know if another pandemic's gonna happen. I sure don't, I sure hope not. But I think what we do know is waiting around the corner for us is private schools. And that is waiting for us around the corner. And I think we can, you know, imagine how that's going to hit and impact our stabilization and our growth. So I know that wasn't really questions for you. It's just, this slide was really, really valuable, I think, seeing that visually. I appreciate that, because even even myself, every time I see a family move in with children, I wanna think, okay, it's coming, you know, here's, here's our regeneration. But really being able to come to terms with, it's not going, it's not going to be growth. And we're going to have to rethink these models of how we staff and what what are these different levels, you know, in our resolution? What's going to trigger all the different pieces that we talked about?
So I wanted to follow up on this slide as well with respect to what Gloria has just said. So the way that I understand it is the stabilization that comes from regeneration is really about the bottom line, the total enrollment in the district. But I think what I seem to hear from people is when people move out and then others move in, so the older kids that have graduated have moved out, and then it's younger kids moving in. So they're saying that our elementary schools are going to experience that new enrollment. And so can you clarify, or maybe even growth, just at the elementary school level? So those are the kind of, I just want to clarify that the stabilization you're talking about here is the total enrollment for the district? And whether having younger families move in really is maybe a data point for possible growth or increased enrollment in the zoned elementary?
Everything that you said is true, that there are older students and and students that graduate that move out and young students move in. But the the concept is still the same, that it's not as obvious to someone driving down the road that an elementary student or a middle school student has moved out of a house and an elementary student has moved into a house. And so this, this is, this is a broad and simplified slide in order to represent a concept that there is always someone who is moving out of a house. And so, yes, while there could, there are young students moving in, it is never going to be the the same magnitude as a new housing construction where no one is moving out, regardless of the age.
Yeah, I want, I do wanna go to slide, it's 45 and 46, well, 45 and 46, I think you have them both on the same slide. Yeah, back, yeah, that one. And it's hard to see there, but I made mine a little bigger, because I really do wanna dig down into some individual campus stabilization that I see that goes somewhat counter to what you're saying about stabilization happens only at the macro level of the whole district and not at individual campus level. Because if you go look, and and I'm gonna take a little bit of time, because I think this is really important. So if you look at Blockhouse Creek, and remember, the three numbers that we're looking at are next year, 26, 27, then five years out, and then 10 years out, right? And so Blockhouse Creek is 501, then 500, then 547. So that's really a stabilization. They're sitting right there, they're not moving a little up and down. If you look at Cox, they're 458, then 412, and 416. So they're losing a small number, but then they're stabilizing in in that second five-year cycle. Cypress, 493, 475, 467. They're they're sitting in that 400 to 500 student band. In Deer Creek, we see some decline. Remember, they have a lot of transfer students in. In Fabian, we see quite a bit of decline. But Geddes, 476, 497, 491, they're pretty stable. And and so we could go through some more, but I think we're seeing a lot in that Cedar Park area, for sure, a relative stabilization at individual campuses. If you look in the south, then Bush is relatively stable at 438, 446, 436. But when you look down at River Ridge, is declining significantly, and then Steiner Ranch is declining some, but again, 418, 387, then 388. I do also, though, wanna look at the flip side of that and look at those campuses that are in the north that are growing significantly. And so if you start at the bottom and look at Tarvin, they're 992, 1331, and 1806. All right, so you're still seeing significant growth there. At north, you're 915, 1,035, and 1187. Mason is particularly interesting at 846, 983, then 1276. Heysel, 647, 925, and 1207. This is important, because we just talked about Baghdad at 481, 705, and 1147. And then Aiken at 860, 971, 1180. So you've still got some significant growth issues in the north that we still have to solve for, even though we know that eventually, some of the stabilization that we're seeing in the center part of the district is gonna come to the north eventually. But same as what we did in Steiner Ranch 20 years ago, we needed those campuses to accommodate the students that were there at that time. The same is happening in the north now. We need campuses in the north to manage the students that we have there for the next 10 years, even though we know that potentially in another 10 years or 15 years from now, we'll see the demographic cycle work its way up through the district. But this tells me a slightly different story than what I had made up in my head before about, as campuses are declining, we're gonna see more and more campuses hit that 60% threshold and then continue to decline. And I don't know that that's true necessarily anymore. They may hit that dark blue and hit the 60% threshold, but then they're stabilizing right there somewhere between that 400 and 500 student level. And that makes a significant difference to our conversation around consolidation, in my opinion. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were very thoughtful about what this data tells me on an individual campus level as well.
I appreciate you pointing that out, Bruce, because I love this slide. I think this is like what I needed, because, you know, we hear a lot in the last two years during this conversation around school consolidation is, well, you're gonna close these two schools, and guess what? It's just gonna keep going, and it's gonna keep going and, you know, painting this doomsday scenario. And in reality, the data doesn't support that. And if anything, it's made me kind of change my, you know, thoughts on, okay, so if we're going, we're sustaining, right? This is, we're sustaining our population, which is not a negative thing. We're not, we're hitting stability. And I really wish our community understand, like, that's not a negative thing. Like, this is just part of the life cycle of, you know, student attendance. And I think for me, what it's really, you know, with all the educational opportunities coming into place and whatnot, is, okay, so we see what's going on, we see we're stabilizing, you know, maybe we need to have a conversation of what 500, 600 schools look like, you know? What does that model look like, right? Because even if we, I know there's a lot of pushback about building two new schools, but data supports it. And if we're gonna sit, if we're gonna go ahead and, you know, for the rest of the district, you know, let's rethink how we look at our school size, and if we do a 506 model, then shouldn't we afford that opportunity to everyone else across the district? And so it's really kind of making me pause and think on this process and grateful we did that resolution, because I think this is, this data is not as bad as what it is, is what many people are thinking it out. And I think it gives us an opportunity to really lay some strong foundations to our long-range planning, right? And then also, you know, really give our parents and our community kind of an answer of where we're going. Because, I mean, I don't think this, we're gonna be closing 10, 12 schools that we've heard. I mean, data doesn't support that. So I love this presentation, and I'm thankful that you brought this up.
I just wanted to add real quick to this slide, and then I'll yield to the others. So the way that I look at it is, it does tell a story, but I think the complete picture of the story, we still have to look at the reasons for those transfers. Because, like, for example, excuse me, so like, for example, yes, the numbers in the in the table on the three columns, they also show, like, that's who is currently zoned in there without the transfers. Is that correct?
Yes.
But one of the things is, if we can look at where we can put programs, then that can help with some of the declining campuses, or maybe not that way. I mean, we probably still need to look at what, really understand the the transfers in and out, also look at the pre-K numbers, and and really just try and be, look at a lot of things holistically. And with all those blues, too, as well, without, yeah, I mean, we should also look at opportunities for even very little targeted rezones, maybe. But that can help draw some of those reds. Because one of my concerns, and I think we'll see that also when we get to high school, is if you need something for a bump for like 10 years, but then you build a school for 30 years, like, in terms of a bond, then maybe we need to find other ways. That's just a thought.
I'll just make an observation about my own thinking, that that one of the pitfalls that I found myself falling into is that, when I started looking at these tables, I get very caught up in the numbers and what's possible with the numbers. And being a math major, I start to move all kinds of numbers around and and get them to where they they make nice sense, and it feels good, and it's just all wonderful. But sometimes what I forget is that there are real human beings involved in this. And so as we talk about transfers specifically, we're talking about pre-K kindergarten children, we're talking about families who have siblings, we're talking about dual-language students who are housed in a campus that they've been housed in for their whole cycle. And so I have to remind myself constantly that, yes, I can make the numbers pretty, and I can make that work, but but we have to also remember all the time that these are real human beings that were moving around.
And those transfers number, the transfer numbers also include possible staff as well. So I mean, and I'm just, I mean, that's, that should be a pretty big point, because, I mean, it's elementary, and you have, you know, staff members who work there, and their kids do get transferred there. So I think that should be a major thing to point out. Not always a negative thing. Nicole, C. Trish? This side of the dais? Are y'all gonna do rock, paper, scissors? Who's gonna go first?
One, thank you. This is, oh.
We need your mic, please, sir. Thank you very much.
I just need to bend it down a little bit. Thank you. Again, I don't wanna, I think this was well, like, well-presented, so just to download some of my thoughts, right? Like, we have, I'm ready to get to the response, right? But but we have schools that are in different life cycles, stabilized, growth, decline. And so I think we mentioned, we have the growth in the north, west, east. We have Early Learning Center that's opening up. Early College might provide a little easement of that. And then we have a planned, two planned schools, 31 and 32, that I think, you know, again, are designed to ease that growth. We have schools that are stabilizing, I think Bruce articulated really well, in the 40s and 50s. And then so I think there's an opportunity in those situations to potentially think about that that small school kind of model that we talked about. I think Shaday mentioned the redistricting. There are some of those schools that are on the border of of over-enrolled schools, and so that's an opportunity. And then we mentioned the opportunity to shift programs. And then there are schools that are in the decline, and there may be some adjusting, redistricting, adjusting borders, and then consolidation, as we've been talking about, might be a viable option for for those schools. And so I think I would love to, and I don't know if we have access to the students that are transferring to charter schools, like, I don't know if the district even has that list or how they can access, but I think, I think Shaday had mentioned this, too, but just, like, finding out the reasons why they're transferring. And that's what I would push our district to kind of, like, understand. And then we just have, and, you know, we have the competition with the AOs. And so I think, and we're working on it, but just want to see that robust plan to sell LISD and to increase enrollment of our resident students. So I think you laid it clearly, like, what our challenges are, and I think it's just up to us now to think about the levers that we've already discussed and what levers are we gonna apply to these challenges that you've clearly articulated.
Trish?
So, yeah, thank you so much. This presentation really hit on some of the main things I was really hoping to see, so we could dig into. You've done such a thorough explanation on so many pieces here. There are, there is a question I have at the very beginning, and we don't even know the slide number, but it was at the beginning, and you talk about, we're in that life cycle of stabilization. My question is, on this life cycle, what are the the measures or the metrics that mean we're not in stabilization, we're in declining? Because I think that's something that I'd like to hold on to, is that stabilization sounds like, it sounds like the the variables that we need to deal with are more defined. Where a straight decline is like, oh, we're gonna have some more things we're gonna have to be working with. So I'm just curious of, like, in that life cycle, how how do you lean into that? Have you talked to some schools that are in the life cycle that is declining? And what are the, is it, is it 5% of population, 10%? Or what does that mean? And it doesn't look like UCS heading there.
So, how do I address this first? First of all, on this graph, the stabilization area, of course, this is just a graphic, this isn't real data, right? And we intentionally And we intentionally made that stabilization line go up and down and up and down and up and down, because there is no complete stabilization. And there will be times when a district, specifically if it's a small district, and if it built really quickly and all of the houses are within a few decades of, maybe one or two decades of the same age, then all of those children will age and graduate and that area will decline quickly. And then at some point, it will stop declining and it will level out at the, at sort of the, I say average, it's not really an average, but the typical distribution of age of the population. And it's easy to use Steiner Ranch as an example because it is an area that is sort of sequestered, right? There's not a lot of, it's all in one capsule, sort of. And Steiner Ranch started building and then built south. And so the elementary schools in the north, the homes in the north were built first and then in the middle and then in the south. And so we, I use that as an example of this microcosm of the demographic lifecycle, the housing construction lifecycle. The stabilization that Dr. Gearing pointed out in Bush and Steiner Ranch versus the continuing decline in River Ridge is because Steiner Ranch and Bush have already experienced their declines. When you look back at their past enrollment, they've already hit that point of all of these young families moving in, you need those schools. And then those kids graduate and those families stay in place. And so that decline has already happened and now they've kind of leveled out. And that is happening in River Ridge, but it hasn't quite finished yet because the homes were built later. Okay? So that's one part to answer your question.
So if I can just interject, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it looks different in River Ridge just because that's a smaller section of the neighborhood, right? So it looks like the number is getting much smaller, but it's really the exact same cycle. And we built that school the same size, though, as the other two, right? It's still an eight-hundred-student elementary school, right? And so its capacity looks much worse, but it's no different. It's just that that's a much smaller section of the neighborhood.
Yes. And I don't remember my other point. Go ahead with your question.
No, no, I was, thank you. That helps kind of put some things in perspective. I was thinking, and I pulled out the, I don't remember what slide it was. It was in, where do LISD residents attend schools? But I pulled out the page when you hit there, because I was thinking that, when I look at it, resident students are forty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-six. And so you know I've asked, and you've heard me ask this question, of ten years ago, we thought we were going to have fifty thousand students. That number's really close to fifty thousand students. And so I think for me, this hit something that's just kind of been wrestling, and I've been trying to think about it, is that you have given us different projections for housing trends. We can say houses. We can see that building. We can see how many students we need spaces for. But this is, this is the kiddos leaving. And this one, this number's building quick. And there are pieces in here, like you said, that who would have, you couldn't have said, oh, we are going to have a voucher come out, right? And to Gloria's very well-stated point, and Anna's too. Anna said, hey, kiddos are going to charter schools. And Gloria's, yeah, in some areas they're going to private. And then not even on this chart's homeschool. So I think the information that you've given us, and I guess, I'm just looking for a little affirmation, I've done this right, is what you, you've given us excellent data points. We have some data points here. But how and what we do with them could change those data points. So what we don't yet see, and I didn't want to see it yet, is what does it look like with the early college, early college, early childhood center? What does this look like with ES thirty-one? Throw in ES thirty-two on another map. And we can see kind of how that ends up impacting. Wasn't the time for the discussion. You had us here first, but you've given us data points to now go and have these next discussions. What does it look like if we do targeted strategic zoning, I'm guessing based on whatever wordings they're talking about? That, how does that look now? How do we help address some of these issues? But no matter what we do with kind of the strategic zoning or the, or looking at the builds that we have, still doesn't help me answer, what are we doing for our kiddos that are going to the privates, to the charters, to the homeschools? Because if we keep losing enrollment at this rate, then we do change these numbers. Then something else happens. Then you're going to come back and say, look, we didn't predict that, right? And so I feel like, you know, that is one of the discussions, too, that we've all been talking about, which is, how are we aware of this enrollment? And sure, we might not get that regeneration of the big bump, but I certainly don't want to keep losing. I'd like to stay as stable as we can. And so I think that's another part of the conversation. I look forward to having that at another meeting.
So when y'all came here in August, I wanted to know pre-K information. And our board memo for eight twenty-nine, there's actually, you put together, you get put together, gave to our admin, is how many pre-K students remain enrolled in land or ISD years later? And I mean, it says on average, eighty-one percent of pre-K students remain enrolled in land or ISD. So like, for me, we've heard from districts across the state, right? They're doing an emphasis of early childhood, because if you can get those students into your system, I hate to say that, into your school district, they're going to stay and the data supports it. And just so y'all know, it's on the eight twenty-nine board memo. It has all of the information Stacy and her team put together from twenty eighteen up until nine. And you see the pre-K class growing and the students staying. And so for me, you know, we hear a lot of negative talk about ECC and this one building in the north. I really wish people understood that it is going to help with the overcrowdedness that is happening in some of these schools. And it's preventing our students from having that full experience. I mean, having twenty-seven kids in a classroom is not impactful at all. And, but I think also to your point, Trish, like, you know I'm a big advocate for early childhood. But, I mean, the data supports it. If we can get these students in, you know, and really go on that early childhood experience with them and their family, they're going to stay in the district. And so when I see this presentation and how we are losing students to charters, especially in the north, I feel like for me, we got to figure out how are we going to grab those students four or five years old so they can understand the benefit of what we're doing here in land or ISD?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't disagree with that. I think that's another conversation. Like, there's other, like, oh, and then what about innovative schools? What is it? What about, how does the open enrollment really impact? How are we really going after the, I mean, I think there's a lot of discussions there. And I do, I think, I think what we're seeing is we are, I love your pointing out the losing kiddos to charters in the north, but we're losing kids all over the district in different places, for different reasons, for different things. And so I look forward to later having more discussion on that. I don't think that's tonight. I think this data just gave us an affirmation from the resolution, we're heading in the right direction. I think that's what I'm hearing from the board, too. I am curious from the board and from administration, now that we have this, okay, what parts start clicking into place and how do we start moving forward?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. One of the things that, I'm looking at all this and I keep thinking, a few months ago, not a few months ago, probably a year ago, we talked about, you know, there was this study that shows like cost, cost analysis of schools and students and programs. And we saw something that, I think it was like AISD had done something. And we asked, we asked admin for something like that. I, I think that's what we need next. Before, before we talk about the next phase of what are the levers, what are the numbers, I think we need, we need to talk to our CFO and have that financial piece. And so I'm thinking about, as we talk about what's next, Pete, are you ready to give us that report? Like, can we do that now? Not tonight. I know it's not, I'm not saying now. I know it's not on the agenda. But I'd like, I'd like to know, can we put that on the next agenda? And I would like that on the next agenda. I'm asking my fellow board members if you like that on the...
I would like that. And I actually wanted to make a comment that is similar to what you just said and also builds on something that Trish said. So, for example, and when we had talked about programs, yes, we have early childhood, pre-K, all of that, that is kind of spread around the district. And especially looking at the early childhood, it's a hundred and forty-seven kids in like twenty-something schools. So if he, his report includes, what is this costing us? How we can maybe consolidate these programs? But the other part of it was, Anna, you brought up the point about, we had heard about the benefits of early childhood, but we had also seen the student outcomes of those who qualify and show up and stay versus those who don't show up and show up in kindergarten. So having better outcomes when they come earlier. So when you look at, like, slide eleven in the births, I just think that, and so to answer your question, Gloria, yes, I think it will be very helpful to see that cost information. So slide eleven, yes. So it really, what I...
Hold on, real quick. Okay, so we have a request from Gloria, a second from Shadé. So the next board meeting we have is the thirtieth, October thirtieth. And so we will make sure, so we want...
Is Pete ready to do that on the thirtieth?
Mr. Pape, can you please?
Well, no, I'll just speak for him. Yes, we are already...
Clarification on what it is we're asking for. Like, I'm just, are we going to be like, is this, which program costs more money? Which one's cheaper? Are we pitting programs against, are we pitting campuses against each other? What are we...
So in board memo, I hope y'all all went and read it, but admin put together this incredible list of what the programs are and what the cost is. We have that information already. So I really encourage everyone to go look at it, because they can tell if you can't look, if you're not looking at it. So y'all need to go look at it.
Is that what we're going to talk about then?
No, this is, so we had talked about this...
Let's clarify what it is.
And board meetings from like forever ago, that we wanted a cost-efficient, like, cost analysis in regards to what we're spending per campus, just overall cost analysis of the entire district, like what AISD did. We requested this back like eight months ago and the board said, okay, we just haven't got that information. And so this sounds like they're both wanting this kind of information to have.
Like, so broken out by like the Title I dollars that are on some campuses and...
I, you know what, Trish, I know Pete...
I'm just trying to understand what it is we're asking for.
Maybe go look at the AISD report that we all agreed on, that we talked about in a board meeting, that we wanted our CFO to go and try to recreate. And so I haven't seen the report. I really don't know. I just, I saw AISD and it had stuff in there like, you know, you have this many students at this mini-campus and, or your master schedule, you know, your efficiencies and what you could save. It's really...
So was master, I want to know what Gloria's asking for and what Shadé's seconding, that's all.
What we asked for was, we saw this cost, this cost efficiency report from a few other districts. And we said, we need something like this so that we can start making the next decision. Because while programs are great and let's do all the programs at all the schools, we don't have all the money to do all the things. And we just saw that we're going to continue losing students. We just saw that in some areas, we're going to have some growth, but we did see that, you know, stabilization is happening. And I think we've got to make decisions that are also financially responsible. Like, can we, can we continue doing this? And I also think, like, those financial pieces, before I start thinking about what triggers, you know, a low-enrolled school to move to a reduced staffing formula, before we start figuring out what is the number, when do we trigger a conversation about closing a campus, I also want to know financially, where are we? Because I don't want us being the next school district getting taken over by TEA. I want to make sure that we're making decisions that are financially responsible for our district. So Pete, can you talk to us a little bit about what are some of the things in that report and how that would help us with this next piece?
Yes, Madam President, members of the Board and Trustees, Dr. Gearing, thank you for the opportunity to kind of briefly provide an overview of what we had planned to present next week. As you recall, as Madam President had mentioned earlier, we had a copy of the report provided to Austin Independent School District. I spoke with the authors of that report and received permission to basically just use their template, if you will. So the first two chapters of this report are strictly cut and cop, almost copy and paste and then put our numbers in. So it's just their philosophy, their way of calculating the data, the cost for the buildings and the inefficiencies, efficiencies, et cetera, et cetera. So that is, that part is complete. And then chapters or sections, however you break it up, three, four, five, and six, each go over three, or sorry, four. I'm going to revert again. Three of the separate reviews we have completed, which is one, special programs of Stetson, Moke and Casey for the master schedule, secondary level. And then the third one was recently completed by Tasby for a central office. And then we also have the internal audit, the academic program management review that was reported, presented to the board about, maybe about two months ago. So those are kind of included in this report. So we start with the information that's provided from, in similar fashion to what the report that Austin ISD received. Then it just kind of breaks down and provides a quick summary of the Moke-Casey report, the Tasby report, the Stetson report, and then a very brief summary, since you've already been presented with the information from the academic program report. So that's kind of where that's at. That is anticipated to have, I'm in the process of wrapping that up and then developing a PowerPoint to go over that next week. Should have that posted or put up on the agenda by next Tuesday. My plan is to give access to the board for all the reports, just so you have more time to review those and skim through them. And then looking forward to a robust discussion a week from tonight.
I just want to clarify, it's called a cost savings audit, is what AISD did. And it's, I mean, it's, it's pretty solid in regards to what they're asking for. And it's a lot of the information this board has asked in regards to what the next steps can be for LRP. And since we have these levers that we're talking about, this will help give us some indication of what levers do we want to pull and the impact that it'll have, right? And so if we talk about school consolidation, I'm just throwing numbers out, this is not, right? We want to know what, if we do close a school, what is that impact, just in year one, but what is year two and three, right? It's not just one single number. There's multiple, like, things behind it. And so this report, I hope, gives us kind of the foundation to start that next step of what those levers are, so we can figure out our plan.
Sure, sure. No, I understand. Thank you, Pete, for the explanation. That really kind of lays out the pieces of, and that academic part is important, too. I mean, I think, of course, there's this part where the board needs to have that oversight. We need to see the information. That doesn't mean we pick the levers. Like, we pick, this is the number for our campus closure, this is the number for our campus. Like, we, we're going to ask admin to give us recommendations. And so, yeah, we need this information. And I do, I, I'm hoping that it can be something that's robust, where it's not just something that makes us try to get down in the weeds. And I'm not the CFO. I'm not going to know what these numbers are. And then also to kind of help us, like, see all of this in context of all the pieces. So if there's also a presentation in that academic portion, I do want to talk about academics, because it isn't just about dollars and cents. It is about, are these programs, are these the things that are leading to the academic advancements and achievement that we're supposed to be focusing on as a board?
My anticipated, or my goal, is to just provide this as an educational opportunity to look at, you know, you have the first two chapters, but here's some data on facilities. And then you look at each of the specific reviews and the areas that those reviews were conducted on, to look at what decisions that we make, whether at master schedule, how much does that cost? And that's just, that's just the beginning conversation. I mean, there's a cost to everything that we do. I mean, there's a cost to everything that we do. And some costs are easily justifiable. We feel that, 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 that cost, the benefit far outweighs that cost. And then as you progress through that, there comes a time where we need to have the discussion with the administration of, you know, is this cost worth this benefit? And then what do we, how do we go about? And where do we take all of these different costs and different decisions? And whether it's staffing, master schedule, and that, there'll be five or six different conversations within master schedule and all of these information. What, what do we feel is best? And what is our district philosophy? And how do, how do we, we, we shape our, our philosophy around that? And what's the timeline? Is it one year, two year, or three year? That we can make these decisions to ease into that, to know that we're making these decisions with the financial. We know what the cost is, but it's not that the cost is the main or the only driver of that decision. It's just we need to know what that cost is so we can weigh the benefit against that. So, it's really more just an edu- to, an opportunity to, to provide an education of what one little decision here, what that can cost, and, and a lot of things that have been done in our district for, for many, many years. Just, it's just the way that we're, we're, we're used to operating. So, now we just, I'm just putting a cost to these decisions. And what these, and some are gonna be like, hey, we gotta keep it, that's great. And some are like, well, maybe not. And some are like, maybe we can discuss a little further. We're on the fence on. And that's really what the, what the intent is for.
And then to Gloria's point earlier about, you know, that staffing model for certain enrollment amount, will, will that also be included in this discussion?
I do not anticipate, well, it will not be included in my part on Friday. Uh, Jeremy has a little bit on the L, L, LPRC? L, L RPC? I always have that mixed, the acronym mixed up. But that will be part of the, the lever discussion in the future, whether or not that, that's next week or not. I don't wanna speak for Jeremy on that one, but that is a, a conversation that will need to take place. I don't have it as part of the report, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
I think the intention of the report is just kind of give us, you know, kind of an overview of where we're about to go down. It's not necessarily like, okay, you know, Aikenspens, blah, 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 blah. Let's get rid of this thing, this thing. It's, you know, the way I look at it is like a financial report, right? When we, when Pete comes to us to budget, we're not, get rid of this program, get rid of this program. But I think it kind of gives us that overview and that higher level view of when we do make those decisions, right? We understand that impact. If, you know, if we get rid of, say, lever A that includes such and such, right? Then that's what it's gonna cost us rather, you know, it just kind of gives us a clear picture.
That helps. Because really, when I saw those conversations on that other thing, this sounds more robust of what we're talking about.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, board members, any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question about this, like. Sorry, need to get back to my notes. Okay, so the way I understand it is that the births, or we've always had more enrolled in kindergarten than were born five years earlier, that cohort. So, a lot of the difference could be made up. So, even if everybody who was born didn't show up, but there's been some influx into the district that has resulted in that. So, now, even as births are actually going up and maybe growth into the district or influx might be slowing and hence their meeting. I think that this is an opportunity, and with all the other headwinds that we face with ESAs or, um, coming and with the current situation with charters, I think it's an opportunity for the district to, to reimagine how we attract people. I know that they've been doing a lot of work in that area, but it's just the continued work, like, people aren't just gonna show up at their local public school just because it's not the only option. And so, finding ways to, to make it the, maybe the first option or the preferable option that people, um, consider. So, that's, in that way, hopefully, we can look for that green line to maintain, um, or change direction and then maintain how it has been before. So, that was just, um, a thought that I had on that one. And, um, yeah, I mean, I guess we can have further discussions, but I understand everything else about the other ones, about, um, we've talked about possible things we can do with regards to, um, yeah, just balancing out the enrollment in some of these schools, secondary especially. Thanks.
So, I just have a clarification, um, on the report that we'll be presenting on the 30th. Um, that does not include program costs. Um, it's a different-
That's a whole different conversation.
So, I just wanna be sure we were preparing that for later. But this conversation on the 30th does not include, for example, pre-K cost or dual language cost or any of those kinds of things.
No, and I, I believe in board memo, you ask board members to send in information in regards to programs. And so, I really need y'all to send in those, those questions by Friday, tomorrow, if you wanna get in regards to programs and what that looks like. So, please send those in so we can get that ready for our next report agenda item. All right, board members, are we good? Wow, we did it. And we, we didn't keep you here all night?
We do appreciate you moving us up on the agenda. That's very thoughtful.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank y'all for, I mean, I know we ask a lot of questions, but thank y'all for coming again to present. But really, thank you for putting together a presentation that is giving us, I feel like this is a good reset for us in regards to the future of where we're going with our stabilization of enrollment. And so, thank you. This presentation, like I said, made me think differently. And I just, I really appreciate y'all putting your hard work into this and answering all of our questions. We appreciate y'all.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
All right, board members, we are going to take an 11-minute break and we will be back.
It is 8:59 PM and the board is back from our break. And now, board members, we will now move to 781, Discussion of Global Languages and Cultures Annual Update. No worries. You got this. Whenever y'all are ready, take it away.
All right. Well, thank you for having us. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing. Um, I am here tonight with the amazing Tina Dozier, our Director of Global Languages and Cultures. And we are here tonight to present to you the Global Languages and Cultures Annual Update. So, the, oh, how do I change this? Here we go. The purpose of, uh, this presentation tonight is to, um, discuss with you all and to review the bilingual education program- and to review the bilingual education programs that we provide in Leander ISD, and also to present to you our model of implementation, emergent bilingual enrollment data, performance data, and professional learning for staff.
Thank you, Lauren. Good evening. The first piece of data that we're going to take a look at is our emergent bilingual population growth. This shows a five-year trend of the growth, and you'll see that in '25, '26, we are at 18% of our total student enrollment. It's slightly different, but still trending upward from 17% last year. The yellow that you see at the top is the percentage of students who are monitored. So, there are students who have met reclassification data. If you remember last year, when we had our presentation, we talked about how the metrics had changed around reclassification. And so, with that composite score, we saw a higher number of students meeting reclassification. In '24, '25, we see that trend continuing, not just at the district level, but at regional and state level as well, with about almost 7,500 students, total EC through 12, who qualify as emergent bilingual in the district. Thank you. This next slide takes a specific look at our early childhood population. In '25, '26, we are 1,033 students who qualify as emergent bilingual. Our percentage of total emergent bilingual students in early childhood last year was 74%. And although the number increased this year, the hard number of 1,033 from 977, the percentage shows a decrease. There are a couple of things to keep in mind with that decrease. This year included, in the total enrollment, includes our Head Start numbers, tuition-based numbers, and then an increase in students whose parents work in the district. So, the total, the denominator, is larger, and therefore, the percentage is slightly smaller for emergent bilingual. This graphic probably looks familiar from last year, but it's been updated to show the top 10 languages, in addition to English spoken by the students in our district. Of these languages, nine will be a part of the exception waiver process for '25, '26, to be submitted at the end of October. If you look at the three-year block here, you'll see that in '24, '25, we have the same number of languages that will file for an exception, but Arabic has fallen off, meaning that we don't have 20 or more students at any one grade level across the district, but Gujarati has been added as an additional language where we have 20 or more students at any one grade level. Program services in the district. For English as a Second Language, we continue to have services at all of our campuses, EC through 12. Dual-language program in English and Spanish. Our early childhood sites are Baghdad, Fabian, and Knowles. And then, our elementary K through 5 dual-language programs are housed at Baghdad, Knowles, Reed, and Whitestone. And current middle school location, Danielson Middle School, Henry, and this year, Leander Middle School. The TALPAS system is the English Language Proficiency Assessment System that all emergent bilingual students who receive services, and even students who are parent-denials for services, participate in this system. And what this system does is measures linguistic growth and linguistic proficiency of students who have qualified as emergent bilingual. This, the graph shows the comparative analysis between local, regional, and state students who are at beginning, intermediate, advanced, and advanced high in their proficiency scores. This isn't, so this particular slide is where students come in. So, students are, there's going to be a different group of students in Leander ISD than their districts, regionally, and state. The important, the important slide that I want to take a look at, this is, this is a great informative slide to see where we are with, with region and state. But I want to take a look at this second slide, which shows where, how are students performing? Are they, are, how are students achieving one or more years' growth linguistically and reaching advanced high? And so, you can see in blue, this is Leander. Our eyes are not deceiving us, in '24 and '25, those metrics were very, they were, I was going to say ironically, but it isn't ironically, it's by the data. But there have been no changes in the metrics for Leander, regional, and state. They remained identical from '24 to '25. Summer school programming is part of the requisite programming for students who qualify as emergent bilingual. These are for our youngest EB students in the district. They're students who are in pre-K and going into kinder, and those who were served through either dual-language or ESL in kinder and going into first grade. This picture is of the 50 amazing employees, both ESL and DL teachers, who make this come to fruition. This is 120 hours of language growth, but also working through the lens of STEM-based activities to promote language growth in the program. Last year, we had 325 students access this opportunity. This year, 560. That's a lot of babies. And so, what are we doing to continually support our emergent bilingual students? We are, this past year, we utilized three of our ESL positions to help meet the requirements, A, help meet the requirements of the bilingual exception waiver process in supports for EB students, but also in shifting to having adult educators to work with our classroom teachers to enhance the web of services that students receive, not just from our ESL teachers who are phenomenal, and our DL teachers who are equally as phenomenal, but to be able to have those supports in place all day long with content areas, or across content areas, EC through 12. And so, currently, these positions are working with our elementary campuses and our middle campuses, middle school campuses and high school are teacher of record. So, these particular positions are working specifically with elementary students, or elementary teachers this year, to, again, increase that web of supports so that those supports are accessible by students throughout the day. We are still receiving our Title III funds, and the Title III funds help us to be able to access regional, state, and national conferences. At this very moment, members of our Global Language and Cultures team, along with our content area curriculum team, are together doing learning in Dallas at the Texas Association of Bilingual Education Conference. One of the things that we, was evident in the Gibson Report, was that the collaboration between those two entities in order to ensure that those diversified practices are apparent and accessible throughout the curriculum, is we do this through this type of collaborative learning. This can take place in regional, state conferences, but it takes place here daily in the district as well, in our professional learning communities, and in the learning that's happening with our district staff, along with our campus staff, to enhance services for our emergent bilingual students. This last icon at the end, part of those Title III funds, along with that particular initiative is through Title III funds to be able to access external entities who we partner with to be able to continue our growing in the practices and best practices for students. And EC through 12 happened through our Dual Language Training Institute. We continue to partner with Kagan, Volleyport, those specifically. We work with them and partner with them through our early childhood dual-language and multilingual initiatives. And then, we certainly have a very strong relationship with our Region 13 counterparts. One of the things that they have done with us throughout the year, we've partnered with them for the ESL academies, which is not just a pathway to getting ESL certification for teachers of record in our district, but the learning that takes place during those three days really equips putting that into practice in their classrooms immediately. Our MACE roles that I talked about, the multilingual adult educators that we added, are going through a trainer-of-trainer process so that we have in-house trainers of these ESL academies, knowing that, moving forward, we have a sustainable way to be able to make that come to life in our district. So, this kind of goes, I think it's perfect with the PASTUP presentation, where we look at past, present, and future. This is 17 years of dual-language in the district this year, but many more years of providing English as a Second Language service, and prior to that, transitional bilingual services. This is definitely my favorite portion to share with you tonight, because it's not my voice, it's the voice of the students who have, in the past, been students in either our dual-language or ESL programs. We're going to highlight Leahy Rodriguez, who is a current staffer for our technology support. He's a technology support specialist here. And then, Jasmin Mendoz Mondragon is a previous dual-language student in Leander ISD who now serves as a dual-language teacher at Baghdad Elementary. Our present, and we have Sonia Gorogono and Jacobo Velez, who are both junior students, one at Vista Ridge, Sonia's at Vista Ridge, and Jacobo at Rouse. Both happen to be drum majors. And their testimony will serve to shed light onto the multilingual longitudinal experience in Leander ISD. And then, we're going to finish out with categorizing Mace's future, but Max is a current five-year-old student at Reed Elementary, whose first language is Ukrainian. And he also is concurrently an English learner, and that now delving into a multilingual journey in Spanish as well as he is and was this evening. At the Reed Collaborative Family Night that we have, I didn't get to attend. I'm here, but I did hear that it, I asked for an exact number to share with you, and they said there were way too many people to have that number for us tonight. So, it just speaks to what we see over and over with the collaboration between our multilingual families and our campuses. So, without further ado, let's hear from our kids.
So, being a part of LISD's dual-language program has really shaped how I support and empower our #1LISD community through my role. It has taught me how to be a more effective communicator in both English and Spanish, keeping my explanations clear and simple, and also empowering our staff, our students, and our parents, and our community who speak Spanish by providing them with a, with someone, with a resource that can help them out whenever they feel like they need to reach out for support and receive assistance in their own native language.
My participation in dual-language has empowered me to enrich our world because I'm able to use my multilingualism to communicate with others. I've been able to use this by volunteering at the clothes closet as a bilingual translator, and I feel I was able to make others feel more welcome and understood.
I think it was a huge privilege to be a part of the first generation of the dual-language program here in Leander ISD. I think being able to speak both Spanish and English has allowed me to do better in all my courses overall, have more knowledge of other cultures and other languages, which I can bring into my classes today.
The benefits that I see with my interests, I now have a love of language, which has then impacted my coursework because I've decided to take French. In addition, since I was able to take the AP Spanish Forward exam in eighth grade, I'm now able to graduate high school with possible college credit in both Spanish and French.
I'm so grateful that I was in the program because I'm able, it's hard to keep a language, especially if you don't use it that often. And with being able in the program, I was able to practice it with my friends. I was able to practice it with all, with the teachers. And that's what I hope with them, I hope that with my students, is that they are able to also keep that practice, keep the language, which is such an important part.
My student experience has been impacted by my participation in the dual-language program because it meant I was able to enter high school with more freedom and options.
The biggest thing that the dual-language program has brought me is the ability to speak Spanish and English, which allows me to connect with other cultures, especially with my family in Colombia. Being able to connect with other cultures allows me to see the world in a different perspective that others don't see.
Multilingualism has impacted me in many ways. It has made me a stronger communicator, as when I was younger, I had to learn how to communicate and interact with people who I couldn't always speak English with.
I think it brings a huge impact for me that I can't live without.
As you can see, the best voices to talk about the student experience are the students themselves. And when we're looking at students who have been a part of, not just the dual-language program or the ESL program, but our Leander ISD student experience, and then they land back in Leander ISD and capitalize, or not capitalize, but optimize those skills when we talk about be ready for anything, we see evidence of it. And I think that lens of past, present, and future is so critical for us when we're looking at all of those things that we are looking at for the future of our districts.
Absolutely.
Are we able to get that sweet little boy back up on the screen? Is that possible?
You have to hear Max. There he is.
Bye. How to say bye in Spanish is adios. And how to say bye in, in Ukraine, it's papa.
And a little dance.
Board members, do you have any questions? No? Thank you all so much. This was such a great presentation, especially the video. Loved it, loved it, loved it.
I loved all of your smiles, honestly.
It was so nice to see all of you smiling, too. Like, I think that it's just such a huge celebration in our district to know that the kids that are graduating from our programs are entering the spaces that they get to serve, they get to give back to our district in these really unique ways. I think that's so cool. So, thank you.
I try to remember to say it every year, but thank you always for the very thoughtful questions, the reaching out that you do to us to inquire about the program, the visits that you do with us to the campuses. We appreciate that so much.
Thank you. Well, thank you all, and thank your team for going above and beyond for our students. That video just shows the impact that this program has. And it's just, you know, my head's already spinning, so I'll be reaching out to you.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you all.
All right, board members, we will now move to 7B1, Announcement Regarding Continuent Education of Board Members. So, I get to read this really long announcement. So, I suggest right now, y'all look at your board memo and see what you need to get caught up on. With that said, under State Board of Education rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. As Board President, I am required to announce the name of each member who has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education, and is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. The requirements for training are measured as of the first anniversary of the date of the trustee's election or appointment, or to your anniversary of his or her previous training as applicable. These are the eight training areas for board member continuing education. Local district orientation, orientation to that Texas Education Code. Post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code. Team building, additional continuing education, evaluating student academic performance and setting goals, identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children, school safety. To the extent applicable to each board member, I will announce a completion or deficiency as required training. For members who still have time remaining to complete required training, I will announce those board members who have scheduled timely trainings, and those who have not yet scheduled the training. At the conclusion of this announcement, I will announce any board member's training in excess of the continuing education requirements. Local district orientation. The following first-year board member has completed the local district orientation training, Nicosi Nelson. Orientation to the Texas Education Code. The following first-year board member has completed the orientation to the Texas Education Code training, Nicosi Nelson. Post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code. The following board members have completed post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code training. Anna Smith, Shari Fashkhan, Nicosi Nelson, Trish Bode, Gloria Gonzalez Stalakia, Francesca Romans. The following board member is deficient in meeting the required post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code training, Paul Gotier. Team building session. The entire board and the superintendent must participate in the annual team building session. The following board members have completed the annual team building training. Anna Smith, Shari Fashkhan, Nicosi Nelson, Trish Bode, Gloria Gonzalez Stalakia, Francesca Romans. The following board member is deficient in meeting the required annual team building training, Paul Gotier. Additional continuing education. The following board members have completed the additional continuing education requirements. Anna Smith, Shari Fashkhan, Nicosi Nelson, Trish Bode, Gloria Gonzalez Stalakia, Francesca Romans. The following board member is deficient in meeting the additional continuing education. The following board member is deficient in meeting the additional continuing education requirements, Paul Gauthier. Evaluating student academic performance and setting goals, the following board members have completed the biannual training on evaluating student academic performance and setting goals, Anna Smith, Shadie Fashkon, Nikosi Nelson, Trish Bode, Gloria Gonzalez Delacchia, Francesca Romans. The following board member is deficient in meeting the required biannual training on evaluating student academic performance and setting goals, Paul Gauthier. Identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children, the following board members have completed the biannual training on identifying and reporting abuse and trafficking, Anna Smith, Shadie Fashkon, Nikosi Nelson, Trish Bode, Gloria Gonzalez Delacchia, Francesca Romans. The following board member is deficient in meeting the required biannual training on identifying and reporting abuse and trafficking, Paul Gauthier. School safety, the following board members have completed the biannual training on school safety, Anna Smith, Shadie Fashkon, Nikosi Nelson, Trish Bode, Gloria Gonzalez Delacchia, Francesca Romans. The following board members are deficient in meeting the required biannual training on school safety, Paul Gauthier. Exceeding required continuing education, because we are achievers. Board member Anna Smith exceeded the required five hours of continuing education for experienced board members' training by 6.75 additional hours. Board member Shadie Fashkon exceeded the required five hours of continuing education for experienced board members' training by six additional hours. Board member Nikosi Nelson exceeded the required 10 hours of continuing education for new board members' training by three additional hours. Board member Trish Bode exceeded the required five hours of continuing education for experienced board members' training by four additional hours. Board member Gloria Gonzalez Delacchia exceeded the required five hours of continuing education for experienced board member training by 6.5 additional hours. Board member Francesca Romans exceeded the required five hours of continuing education for experienced board member training by .5 additional hours. And that is, we are done with that agenda item. That's it. So it is now 29:22 PM and the board will not go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Codes 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation or attorney-client privileged matter. Texas Government Code 551074, personnel deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignments, duties, and evaluation of personnel and public officers. Texas Government Code 5510821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personal identified information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation regarding superintendent contract. Texas Government Code 551074, deliberation and consideration employment of the Cypress Elementary School principal. Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation and consideration of the employment of the River Plays Elementary School principal. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action related to closed session items will be taken during open session.
...
...
Board members, do you have any motions related to closed session agenda items?
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Justin Gomez for principal at Cypress Elementary School. One-year probationary employment contract for personnel addition as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2025-26 school year.
I second.
I have a motion from Shadaya, a second from Gloria. No discussion, we're great, all in favor. Five eyes, motion passes.
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Stacy Steele for principal at River Place Elementary School. One-year probationary employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2025-26 school year.
I second.
Motion from Shadaya, a second from Gloria. Any discussion? Nope, all in favor. Five eyes, motion passes. Great job, board members. It is now, I don't have my clock, 10:25 PM and having no further business, this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees is adjourned.